Post World War II, under fifty-three, yes, whatever. That's a, it's like a general fund, yeah.
Today is the last one in seventy-two hours, twenty-three. Side of the meeting that we will discuss. Other items. I just wanted to ask that. You know what, there's something before. This is on that item. Who's entitled study, take the LA for three, six, twelve.
I'll talk loud. Did you guys miss me?
Miss Conover, I think policy is first.
But you were doing policy, no?
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call it an order to the Policy Committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Allentown for today, July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Prior to tonight's meeting, an informational executive session was held to discuss a new school partnership, the legal status of some promised proposal agreement, and Allentown School District Foundation and confidential matters pertaining to personnel. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and non-agenda items. This first opportunity, um, of the comments in the beginning of the meeting is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public cards once the meeting begins. Per our board policy, any person may address the board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of this policy. Either on issues presented and resolution being considered or or on other matters affecting the administration, management, or operation of the district. Remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. Okay, if you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment and hand a card to Secretary Ms. Pollak. Comment cards are located near the podium. Uh, Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Phoebe. Good evening, School Board of Directors, uh, to members of the public. Uh, good evening, everyone. So, um, I just, tonight, we're going to present, present on the policy committee our bullying and cyberbullying policy. So Ms. Pollak is going to come and share that policy with us.
Okay, at this time, we're taking public comments on agenda items.
There are no public comments on agenda items.
We'll have it on non-agenda. Okay, all right then. All right, okay. We have one agenda item this evening. It is a presentation that includes the first reading of the bully, uh, policy two forty-nine bullying and cyberbullying presented by Ms. Tiffany Pollak. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm presenting our bullying prevention and policy two forty-nine bullying cyberbullying updates. Every year, our Allentown School District students in grades three through twelve are given the Olveus Bullying Questionnaire. It's a standardized, validated tool for assessing bullying problems at schools. It provides individual school information about how frequently students bully or are bullied, what types of bullying are most common, where bullying occurs, and also how often students report bullying and how they feel about bullying. It provides our district with building-specific information critical to planning our bullying prevention efforts. It, it really helps us to gather detailed information about bullying behaviors, attitudes, and related issues in the school environment. It increases awareness on the part of the staff, students, and families to address bullying in our schools. This slide shows the number, the number of students who participated in the questionnaire. Of the seven thousand three hundred and three students in elementary school, eighty-three percent participated in our middle schools, two thousand three hundred and thirty students participated, and forty percent in our high schools. The next three slides show key questions from the questionnaire that give you a snapshot of our data. This slide shows the percentage of students who like school. Our elementary students report that they like school at a higher percentage than our middle and high school students. This question shows how students responded that they have been bullied at school in the last few months. The table at the top of the slide shows that our, that our elementary students reported a slightly higher frequency of bullying compared to the national average of students who also completed this questionnaire. Our middle and high school student results are lower than the national average. The three tables across the bottom provide four years of data for this particular question and show that our middle schools are currently lower than in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and our elementary and high schools are slightly higher. Elementary students reported the playground and the lunchroom, and middle and high school students reported the hallways and the classroom with the teacher in the room being the most frequent location. This particular slide shows our Sapphire data. There are a number of infractions that we monitor in Sapphire that are considered bullying behaviors or bullying. So level one disrespect to peer and level one bullying behavior are handled in the classroom by the teacher. That level one disrespect to peer doesn't always raise to the level of bullying, but it is one of the infractions that we monitor. Level two and three are, are identified as bullying depending on the severity, and they are investigated by an administrator. This slide shows the data over the last four years that includes our virtual time during the pandemic, which is why you see the drastic change in numbers. The table at the bottom of the slide indicates the number of bullying investigation reports that were submitted by ASD families by level.
So Ms. Pollak, as you can see, it went up in two thousand and twenty-three. I know that you're going to go into a presentation of something we're going to be doing to that, but I just wanted to point that out to our board members.
Again, that level one disrespect to peer doesn't necessarily rise to the level of bullying, but again, it is a behavior that we keep our eye on and obviously strategies that we want to teach our students about how to be kinder to each other, interpersonal relationships. Districts, sorry. Districts are required to update policy two forty-nine every three years according to the Pennsylvania Department of Education's Safe Schools. In order to engage our stakeholders and provide opportunity for feedback, our students participated in focus groups last week. In addition, the draft policy was pushed out on social media to encourage families to visit our policy page to review the policy and provide feedback. It was also shared with central office staff and building leaders and all teachers via email with a Google form where they were able to provide feedback. And I, I will share a little more of the, the feedback that we got from our students in the next slide. All of our secondary school counselors, along with administrators, facilitated the groups to give students the opportunity to share their thoughts and perceptions about bullying. Eighty-six middle and high school students participated. I just included some of the themes that we saw with all of their feedback. Most students felt that bullying is more uncommon in high school than in middle school, and the most common forms of bullying that they reported during these focus groups were verbal bullying, name-calling, and cyberbullying. They felt that students bully other students because they're different or because they have insecurities or lack of self-worth, and that it could have and that it could affect their mental health, their depression, poor attendance, and cause unnecessary drama, which was another theme that our students all communicated. They felt that they could talk to their friends or teachers, um, that, uh, they had outside supports and family. And some students feel, or, or most of the students felt supported by teachers, however, they said they stayed quiet in the classroom because of the perception of their peers that they're telling. In addition, students were asked what did they think could be done about bullying in schools? What could other students do? What could staff do? How could the superintendent support? Um, to summarize, kids said to make sure that, that they have an outlet to share their thoughts, encourage teachers to be more patient, listen and pay attention to them, um, that teachers would take the time to talk to them privately, and they, they had some suggestions for their peers to either report it, walk away if it's happening, or, or be the student that tells another student to stop. So the bystander are kind of engaging. They said that online makes it very difficult. They expressed some concerns around bullying, uh, social media, um, and also that the teacher could be more supportive with academic problems that would help with that as well. So as we work to continue to improve our bullying efforts in schools, we are currently, all of our schools are working on developing action plans that are directly related to their individual school data, in addition to identifying additional staff to be trained to promote and incorporate bullying prevention programming. They're preparing to present bullying prevention education at the beginning of the school year to the entire staff and ensure that on-the-spot interventions and reporting procedures are consistent across schools. They also plan in the beginning of the year to hold the school-wide events, which maybe you've seen the Bullying Prevention Month in the month of October when everyone wears orange. Also educating staff and families of the anti-bullying rules and ensuring that class circles and morning meetings are happening in classrooms. We need to continue to create as a district additional opportunities and work to build relationships and better connect with students. The purpose of policy two forty-nine is to ensure we are providing a safe, positive learning environment for our students. This draft policy includes minor content updates for better clarity. The definition of cyberbullying was deleted and they incorporated it into the definition of bullying. They revised the definition for school setting, um, replaced the district's bullying prevention intervention and education programs with PSBA's education language. They added PSBA policy guide language on reporting incidents of bullying and also added language to include the district's report form, which has changed from the one that we had in the past. They revised consequences for violations and added language to include immediate reporting of required incidents to our local police department in accordance with state law and regulations. This next slide shows the updated report form. One of the differences is that it now includes discrimination, sexual harassment, bullying, hazing, dating violence, and retaliation for students and employees. Previously, the report form was just for students, so now it encompasses both groups. It includes a level for informal or formal reports, the type of reports, a place to identify if there are safety concerns associated with the report, and any other reports that were made previously. In addition, the policies are listed on that report form where the Title IX Coordinator would need to indicate which policies they feel are being, um, not followed, and a recommended course of action by the Title IX Coordinator.
May I stop you for one moment?
Sure.
Okay, so this is the, did, did, did all of our board members receive this report? Okay, so that, that would help you understand some of the things that are going on. This was Tasha. Yes, okay, go right ahead.
That concludes pretty much of the updates for the report form and for the policy updates. Do you have any questions?
I do. You can find my first one. Okay, um, so I noticed in the slide it gave scenarios of how often students are, um, recording that they're bullied. So there's a, a section, a column that states class teacher not in room. Right, and I noticed that those percentages are just as high as when the teacher is in the classroom. Could you give me examples of when teachers are not in the classroom? Like, why are students left unattended? Like, what type of scenario is that?
That is one of the questions on the questionnaire, so i- it's, it's pre, the questions are predetermined. I do, I can't speak to any time that students would be unattended in the classroom.
Okay, the reason I ask that is because, I don't know if it's because, uh, maybe the teacher that is the normal teacher for that class, if they're out and it's a substitute, or if there's no, you know, teacher in the class at all. So if that's the case, that maybe the teacher's absent that day on vacation or wherever the case may be, we need to clarify that, so this way it's not the assumption that there's no teacher in the classroom.
And we do have the ability to add two questions, and that may be one that next year we add a clarifying question that, that goes along with that one.
However, Mrs. Natasha, I just want to let you know, I'm gonna let you finish. We were being extremely honest, extremely honest to find out the answers to these and also to present the questions to our students.
So was any of, the response, the question that I asked her is, is, could you give a scenario? Like, did you find out any scenarios of why?
No, I don't have that, but that will be a question that we will definitely, um, add on to that. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. My other question is, um, in reference to the focus groups. Do we track the number of focus groups that are held? And also, um, do we record the amount of focus groups that are being held per topic?
I can speak to the focus groups for the bullying, and I did, um, track the number of groups that were, that were done and how many students were in each group, and also had notes that were sent to me from each group. I would, I, I can't speak to the other focus groups, but I would say that, that anyone that does focus groups would be keeping that same data.
Okay, so now when we collect that data, are we creating solutions to resolve the issues based off of the, the, the data that we're collecting?
That is the next step. Right now, where, where our principals are working on action plans by building, so they're taking all of this data question by question, identifying the concerns, and then working collaboratively on the strategies, which also from the Office of Student Services, we are offering support to collaborate with buildings of what's working, what isn't working, what are, you know, what are some buildings doing that, and why are they seeing the lower numbers?
Okay, and then my last question in reference to that, if I have any other. Yeah, so my last question is, um, is it acceptable for the board to receive a report of what that looks like? Because I feel like the board is often, you know, like, we make, we, we vote for or against policies, you know, different incidents and things like that. However, it's times that we don't really have that information, and it's important that we do have that information. So is it something that we could receive as a board?
I just want to understand your question. What are you looking to receive? Because of course you can receive everything, but tell me what you mean.
So specifically to?
Sure, absolutely.
The questions that I ask, could we receive that? Okay.
We have the building level data that breaks it down by question. Um, and then we also have, well, we will have the, the action plans that each building is in the process of developing as well.
Great.
And those are also public documents, so the public can take a look at it in aggregate.
So I can write this down, because I will remember, um, when would those reports come out, or how often would we receive? Is it quarterly, annually? Like, how are they?
An, annually is when we do this.
As it relates to the bullying or discipline, or I just want to be clear till we answer the question.
The focus groups and?
You know, I would think for, as it relates to bullying annually, because we're gonna collect the data at the end of the year, but the board wants updates quarterly, we can make that happen as well.
Okay, and when will we receive the reports? Just so I can follow up at another time, I want to make sure that I'm following through and holding myself accountable.
Well, there's one part, the actual report, and then the action plans. So are you asking for both or just the, the, the data itself? Because, you know, of course, the data's not good, but, but it's just data if we're not acting upon it. So are you, okay, so if?
I want the, sorry, I don't mean.
No, go ahead.
I want the data, and I also want the action plan behind it, because I want to see if exactly what we collect then matches up with what we're doing, and if there's a discrepancy between the both, how we can address it differently.
So I would say during the fall semester, I can't give you a specific month because schools are working on their plans, they have to engage their stakeholders in input and those continuous improvement plans to address these data. So to be fair to schools and engaging their communities, maybe after the first marking period would be the latest.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question and two suggestions. Um, in the policy, it states, um, that it's updated every three years. Is that something that we're locked into? Like, say, for instance, we get this now and we implement this policy, and something new happens, and we need to make an adjustment to the policy. Are we locked in for the three years in that policy?
I think that's PSBA, but.
Yes.
We're able to make adjustments as it relates to the data that we're collecting and base, situationally. So we can go back and we have, you know, Ms. Smith helps us and Ms. Pollak with a lot of state reporting, and so we can just make modifications when appropriate based on the data that we're collecting in our situation.
Okay, great. And then, um, two suggestions, but I want to ask the question to make those the suggestions. Are we having any bimonthly quarterly assemblies about bullying in ASD?
They're not bimonthly, but schools are having assemblies. During Bullying Prevention Month, all of the schools have different activities that they're doing around bullying, but I, depending on if they're working on problem-solving, or like I said, building relationships, that's constant, and that's a preventative effort for bullying. So I think maybe not necessarily an assembly, but there are a multitude of things that are happening in schools that support the bullying prevention efforts.
And we're sure. And I'm, I'm asking that because that's the feedback that I'm getting, that there, there's not a lot of engaging happening with the students when it comes to bullying. Like, we will talk about it at the beginning of the school year, and then I don't know if we get too busy or curriculum is happening, but it's not happening where it's like, it's being imp, like, yeah. So I'm, I'm suggesting that we put something in writing with the schools that, whether it's quarterly, they have some type of an assembly or gathering to kind of reassess where they are, talk about bullying, make sure that they know what's acceptable and what's, what's not acceptable.
Thank you for that feedback. I think that we could add it into our action plans and share that with principals as they're developing their next steps.
Yes. And, um, another suggestion that I had was to engage community partners that have organizations that deal with anti-bullying or mental health, where students ha, that have that kind of reoccurring issue where they're bullying others. They can be referred to those organizations to do some type of community service or some type of program or something like that, where, you know, everything is not falling just on the school, but, you know, we're depending on the community partners as well, because there's a few organizations that focuses on this, and I think if students know that they're, they all have to report to an organization for five days to do something like that, I think it might thought they're thinking of doing this. Yeah.
So, Miss, one of the things that she did put in there is a culture, and that's part of the culture change to, to engage our community partners in this as well.
And Ms. Pollak, can you talk about our, our SAP process as well as the coalition that we're convening to get at just what Ms. Brownwell is requesting?
Sure, all of our schools have the Student Assistance Program where they can refer students. It may potentially be a student that's a victim of bullying or a student that is doing the bullying, and then it's more of a collaborative team approach that includes some of our community partners like CHC to discuss what are the concerns with the students, and how can we put our heads together to put either interventions in place in the school, or at times it may require out-of-school interventions, and, and students can self-report, students can report other students, families can, um, refer students to that process, and so can community or family members. And also our social workers are part of that, our school counselors, it's really that whole team, um, that works to wrap support around students.
Oh, good. Is, is that often used? Because we have a lot of resources and sometimes students are not aware of the resources, and if we're, if we can have it, but if it's not being utilized, that's the question. So are we utilizing that service?
Can you talk about, because it's a law? Can you talk about that in policy, and it has to be implemented with fidelity? And should, do we have some opportunity for growth? Absolutely.
Yes, there, yes. And there is a reporting process, so we report the number of students to the state that, that are referred to SAP. There is a parent consent piece to that, um, just depending on how it is so that you're not talking confidential information or potentially speaking about a student without the parent knowing. So that piece is there, but it doesn't mean that we're not still providing supports if it may take a little bit of time to get the consent.
Thank you.
And one thing to add on to that, um, just out what you were asking. Uh, Ms. Pollak and I are convening a social-emotional learning coalition of, uh, community providers throughout the city. Uh, Representative Schausberg actually is, um, going to help co-chair that with us. So we engage all of our mental health providers who are working with our schools so that we have common approaches and common understandings, as well as meeting the needs of all of our learners. Because as you said, we need to elevate more, um, that the opportunities that are available throughout the district and throughout the community. So we're excited. We have the upcoming of our initial meeting is coming up soon. I remember the date off the top of my head. But we are going to the initial planning meeting, and then we're gonna bring all the providers together, and they're pretty excited about this, so.
Just so you know, when I ask certain questions, it's not that, I, I want people to have that extra feedback, because not everybody know, not everyone is a reader, and sometimes you have to ask the question out loud so we can hear it.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Pollak. All right, may I have a motion to move policy two forty-nine forward?
So move.
I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just thank you, Ms. Pollak, for giving us that information and being able to answer the questions. I appreciate it.
All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. At this time, we are pu, taking public commitment, comment on non-agenda items. Once recognized, please come to the platform, state your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your remarks to three minutes. Mr. Secretary, do we have any comments?
We have one comment on, on a non-agenda item, Milagros Canales.
That's what you wrote.
Good evening. My name is Milagros Canales. Everybody knows me as Millie, and I just want to say that I am very proud to be a parent of the Allentown School District. I've always been. When my kids graduated, I have my last baby. His name is Rocco Ramos. Um, and this summer, he has been very busy, with that basketball and everything else. But, um, he was fortunate to be part of the Black and Latino experience at Meridian, uh, University. And I have to say that I was so impressed, um, with the program. Um, Allentown really represented it. Uh, there was a lot of kids there. Uh, there is a picture on the social media page for the Allentown School District as far as other parents whose kids was part of the program. Um, I took the initiative and got two T-shirts for both Dr. Burks and Dr. Phoebe Harris that I will be giving them as a thank you, um, and this is from Dr. Hunt, um, that we were given there as part of the presentation. But the thing that I want, uh, for people who don't know, what made this program so amazing was that the kids would talk, um, to us if they were college students, they were treated like they were college students, they had conversations like they were college students. In the end, they were given custom-fitted suits, um, and took pictures that were very, um, they looked amazing. But my son wears a suit, he has his own book, you know, he wears bow ties. But one of the things that I want to say was the kids who never had a suit or never had a bowtie, learn how to get a bowtie. They got their hair cut by the local police, and they had conversations about what happens when you are in college campus. Um, right now, my son Rocco is in the morning call. He is representing Penn State, the only student in the Allentown School District there at the Entrepreneur Camp. He will be giving a presentation, um, to the community. Um, as a parent who lives in Center City, and they say that our school district sucks, I want you to know that it does not. And if anybody, if you ever had it doesn't. Um, and my daughter Rebecca is out there, and she's a graduate of the Allentown School District too, and my granddaughter Evie is going to kindergarten. She already went to the kindergarten boot camp. And my granddaughter Evie is going to kindergarten. She already went to the kindergarten boot camp, drove her teacher crazy though with the questions. Um, I can't be more proud of, uh, can I get a shirt? Like, can I get an Allentown School District shirt? Like, I just be honorary staff. At this point, but I, I, you know, as a proud mom, I come from New York. I was a former foster parent, um, foster mom, kid, and became a foster mom and adoptive mom. This is hard. Uh, people don't understand how hard it is to see your kids in a school district where everybody says you don't succeed. And then you find people who do care. Um, he has two other moms, they sitting up there that he loves and he pushes. And, and Miss Phoebe, you know, you too, my daughter's moms. Um, I had, and Miss Nancy, you know, my, my kids forever. I have a lot of support, but that's because I'm always here trying to learn. And I take back all the information that I have back to the community. So I really want to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
There we go.
Good night. Okay, is there any old business coming for the board? Any new business? May I have a motion to adjourn? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Uh, the next one is policy.
Education.
Oh, education. I'm sorry. I just did policy. Excuse me. Education.
So with the board's commission, we have part of it of, we had a few items, one year, but education. I'm going to ask, um, since Melissa Smith will be presenting for the first five, if the board would agree that we could take all five of them at the same time. And those items on this agenda that had renewed or have presented with different names, we would take those together, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
So let me just, um, um, Ms. Smith, before you get started, I'm just gonna press the title and then you can.
Absolutely.
The first one on the agenda would be Study Sync ELA Curriculum Resources for grade six through twelve. Second item is Benchmark ELA Curriculum Resources, K through five. Third item would be Social Studies Curriculum Resource, six to twelve acquisition. The fourth would be Reveal Math, six through eight, Algebra One, Algebra Two, and Geometry. And then the fifth would be Status in Vision Math for grades K through twelve. Sorry, I hope.
I spoke loud enough because my mic was not on.
Thank you, Ms. Conover.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Ms. Conover, just may, Ms. Conover. So I wanted to say, um, this evening, we're really excited because today marks a historic turn of, of transformational change happening in Allentown School District. We, uh, once we present this to the board and the board uh, votes for the curriculum that we're presenting, we're making a significant investment in the curriculum, which is the core of the work that we're doing. We allocated more than twenty million dollars in curriculum development in our district to buy curriculum resources. So today marks the day that we're going to present some of that curriculum to you. And this is an exciting time because we are in the learning business. And I want to say publicly, I want to thank we've had some of our extended team of, of our consultants to help fill in some of the gaps in areas in which we didn't have staff uh, to in some of our content areas in which we are recruiting directors and such. So I'm just excited. I want to thank Ms. Smith for her leadership and work in this area as well. So I want to say that.
Thank you so much, Dr. Burks. At this time, Ms. Smith, if you, please feel free to proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Burks. Thank you, Board of Directors, and good evening. Um, before I begin, I would like to introduce uh, some of our staff, our fantastic staff that is here tonight to support this. For math, we have Frank McGee. We have Chris Temprow and Gretchen Clyde, um, some of our secondary teachers and instructional coaches. For our ELA initiatives, we have SOI Supervisor of Instruction, Ryan McCloskey. We have Principal Kate Griffin. We have English Teacher at Allen, Michelle Bruno, and we have a reading specialist, Dorian Gill here. So thank you for coming and supporting us tonight. In addition, we do have Anna St. Dalea Pena here, who has been a support, and Dr. Joanne Barnett is on Zoom for us as well. Tonight, we have a brief agenda for you. We're going to give you some history and rationale of our curriculum process. We're going to talk to you about the consultant's purpose, the drivers for evaluation, the recommendations shared with the ASD community, our collaborative activity, our recommendations, and our next steps. Everything that we're doing, this deep review, analysis, and evaluation comes back to our curriculum audit. And ensuring that we reviewed, revised, teach, uh, a tested curriculum, beginning with core content areas. So our focus tonight that we are presenting to you includes ELA, K-12, Math, K-12, and Six Twelve Social Studies. There's four phases that we're doing for our curriculum and review cycle. And you can see this started back in twenty twenty-one, where we started to research and we started to map and we started to have discussions that followed by some of the teachers that are here, having time to learn about curriculum writing and beginning to write. We have our resource selection, which our recommendations are this evening. And then what comes next is lots of professional development to support our teachers. We will have our implementation over the next few years. And as we are implementing, we are always going to go back to review, edit, and revise so that we are providing the best core instruction to our students. The overview of the process that we established that timeline again for ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies and World Languages. So while you don't see some of those um, recommendations coming to you this evening, you will be seeing those in the future. Dr. Mary Ann Wright started us with ongoing professional development in curriculum mapping, writing, and instructional best practices. K-12 Science has had a big review with the new NGSS, the Next Generation Science Standards. The process for identifying curriculum materials were developed. It included stakeholder input, RFP creation and review. And then finally, the revision in our ASR requirements with our spending allocations required a little bit of a faster pace with this modification. The overview of the process is we started with RFPs. And we had intensive RFPs and they were detailed and you can find those on our website. We received those and we reviewed them. We had curriculum fair, so we had teachers reviewing the RFPs. When we had recommendations, we had our teachers at the end of the year look at them. We had our community curriculum fair so that we were receiving stakeholder feedback for teachers, administrators, and community. Feedback was analyzed and top recommendations for each content area were identified. And then consultants were hired to help review the curriculum recommendations and make the recommendations to ensure that we were putting together rigorous, high-quality instructional materials for our content areas. The consultant's purpose, they were to review the instructional material selection to date. So they came in in the middle and they went through the process that, to see what we did and honor the work that had been done. They evaluated the recommendations for curriculum for K-12 Math, ELA, and Social Studies. The consultants made recommendations to share and discuss their recommendations and their rationale for why they made those recommendations. They, they did a lot of review and reading in such a short time and a lot of meetings with um, vendors where we were also on those calls um, to make sure that they were understanding the programs and the lenses that they were looking for. They reviewed feedback with stakeholders. They examined their recommendations. They asked questions and they checked references. The drivers for this, this is what the, was at the heart of what we, the work we were doing and what the consultants were using to create their decisions. At the forefront, first and foremost, is our students and their needs. Academic needs, our English learner needs, our students with IEPs needs. We were looking at how well do the curriculum materials meet the needs of our students while having high expectations. The mission of our school district, we also looked at who our teachers are and what needs and supports do our teachers require? The instructional goals and objectives, the alignment to our PA Core standards, higher order thinking, project-based opportunities, the rigor and relevance of the materials, parent engagement, and us looking at the digital components involved, involved, as well as the stakeholder feedback. Again, our ASD students were at the top of their list. In order to hear from and share recommendations with instructional stakeholders, a meeting was held on Thursday, July thirteenth from eight AM to twelve thirty PM. And guess some of the, our representatives were at those meetings. What you need to notice from this, of those ninety-seven representatives, we had a good balance between fifty-five teachers as well as our um, central office and our instructional leaders in our buildings. So this was not heavy from central office, heavy from our principals, but it was a collaborative voice between our teachers and our administrators. Our recommendations for K-five Math for the school year twenty twenty-four, as you know, you have already approved Go Math to be used. However, we are recommending the purchase of Savas Envision, the PA Core Edition, because it's aligned to PA Core. And what we're going to do is provide instruction and professional development to our teachers to ensure that they are prepared to implement a new curriculum when the time comes. What we feel we'll be doing is providing professional development and then they'll have the materials in their classroom to be supporting their learning. So that is the recommendation for um, so K-five Math and full implementation would begin next year. The rationale for this, this selection involves, again, a strong alignment to our PA Core standards, but also the mathematical practices were heavily addressed in there. Um, there's accessibility for students and usability for teachers on learning and classroom application. Our recommendation for Six Twelve Math, and I say Six Twelve Math with excitement, um, because this is the first time we are going to put curriculum together that goes from six to twelve, the same curriculum, which means we're going to be supporting our high school students with that transition. Those ninth graders will have transition because they will have had three years, two years, one year of work in the same material. So those routines that are taught in the middle school, the structure of the materials will continue in high school. So again, the support for our secondary students, um, where we know we have great needs with our school improvement designations, we are aligning the work six to twelve to support our students. So McGraw-Hill Reveal Math with Alex is recommended. Um, and this was selected because of the diverse backgrounds and perspectives. There's a wide range of assessments for these programs or for this program and consistent attention to that vertical alignment from six to twelve. The materials include an emphasis on conceptual understanding and the Alex is a differentiated uh, program to support them. Um, Math will be, needs to be purchased immediately for six, eight, because there, they don't have those resources. We didn't renew Go Math like we did for the elementary level. Just so you know, our vendors have said that if we place the order by Monday, all materials will arrive before the start of school. We did not recommend HMH Go Math, the new version, which is our current program. We did not recommend Great Minds Eureka and HMH Into Math. Because again, high expectations with high support for our students and both Reveal and um, Envision had high support for our students as well. Our recommendation for English Language Arts, ELA K to five, we are recommending Benchmark Advance for our core programming. This program is based on the science of reading. It is um, developed with high expectations, with high support for all our students. There are, there are materials specifically for English learners to help them access the core programming as well as our students with special ed um, or disabilities to help them access programs as well, as well as intervention programs. We are purchasing all of those programs. So we will have a comprehensive program to support all our learners in um, K to five with our literacy recommendation. A recommendation again for six to twelve, because we are looking for that alignment from middle school to high school is Study Sync from McGraw-Hill. Studies Think Sync is organized by themes. It is at the high school level where the curriculum work has spent time building their instructional themes that they're going to start to implement next school year. They will be able to search for the materials that target those themes. The instructional support for this program is very diverse and you can actually differentiate by English learner levels to support our students within the classroom. We did not recommend Wonders, K to five. We did not recommend Amplify. And we did not amplify or recommend HMH Into Lit. Again, all of these programs are good, but we were looking for what meets our students' needs with high expectations and high support so that we can increase student achievement and increase student outcomes. Our recommendation for Social Studies, K to five, we have had two dedicated teachers for two years working on social studies at the elementary level. However, they were the only two that were involved in the curriculum selection process. So the Dr. Wright, who is the um, consultant supporting Social Studies, did not feel we had enough information from our elementary teachers and our elementary staff to make a recommendation for Social Studies. So you will be seeing that recommendation come in the next few months. It is just not ready right now for um, a recommendation. Six Twelve Social Studies, again, alignment, you approved in the fall our, our new sequence for Social Studies. This program, um, Savas is going to actually create specific lessons for us or specific materials to go with our themes. And so we will be doing, um, we will be having that creation of content as well as our, our curriculum, our written curriculum matching what our approved sequence of topics are. Um, Savas did score the highest of the four vendors we had looked at in the culturally responsive criterion. Not recommended for Social Studies was McGraw-Hill, HMH, and Perfection Learning. Again, we are doing what's needed for our students and we aligned our Social Studies curriculum to a certain order and Savas is allowing us to tailor what we're doing to meet that curriculum, to meet our students' needs. Our recommendations and next steps. If the board adopts and approves the recommendations, the consultants will work with us, administrators, principals, supervisors of instruction to develop professional learning for each content area to support the implementation of new criteria, curricula. Now I have to tell you, if you approve this, starting Monday, we're having PD because teachers want access to their materials. So we have it set, starting to schedule. So there will actually be two meetings next week so we can really dive into the ELA programs. So we are prepared, but then there are sneak peeks for our teachers for the next two weeks so that they can have a little bit of a glimpse, because they saw it at the end of the year, but they haven't seen it since. So we really want them to feel comfortable and at least have some ideas about it. So PD will begin before the school year starts and then it starts. And then if, in September, as they're starting and you know, sometimes you get there and you're like, what did they say? We're actually setting up office hours to support our teachers during September to make sure they're supported in those early days of implementation. We're going to expand our elementary CDR, CDRC committee so we have that social studies app, so we can look at social studies and make a recommendation to you for curriculum. And we will begin the process of identifying curriculum materials for other content areas such as world languages, science, fine arts, and high school. So do you have any questions?
I'm going to ask my colleagues. I'm, I'm going to be a little bit out of order. If you could write down your questions, because what I did is I started without asking if there was anybody in the public that wanted to speak on agenda items. So I want to definitely have whatever they're talking about in my head while we're having our meeting. So would that be okay? So do we have anyone?
We have one comment.
It has to be agenda item. So it has to. It has to be agenda item, so it has to have something to do with education. So if it's not, we can switch it, because I don't want to be confused. Now, I want them to come, if we would allow.
Do have one comment on agenda item.
On the education agenda item. Please come forward.
Diane Hollowell.
Thank you. Please write your, your comments down, colleagues.
Uh, Diane Hollowell Highland Drive. Uh, I have to start off with, I appreciate all of you board members and the positions, because I truly believe that you are here for the betterment of our students. And that is why I come and speak at these meetings, because my concern is also their education, their safety, and their well-being of the students that I teach. I've been teaching in the district for twenty years. I've seen a lot of good, no, great teachers, administrators come and go. Sometimes it seems like a swinging door. And this year, I am really concerned about the administrative positions leaving. From twenty seventeen, according to school board minutes, we had an average of eleven resignations. This year, we are at twenty-nine, and more might be leaving before the school year starts. I am hoping that we are asking these individuals leaving to take an exit interview, so we can find out what is the reason that they're moving to another district. I can only assume that some of these administrators are leaving might be because they're wearing many hats, filling in for unfilled paras, security, or staff positions. And checking out those open positions online, there are sixty-six paraprofessional positions that need to be filled. This is really scary for the safety of our students. But I guess eighteen thousand dollars a year isn't much of an incentive. And I also see in the agenda the hiring of a company called C D W to help fill our I T positions. I wonder if we paid our district I T comparable rates as surrounding districts, we would get more applicants. C D W desktop technicians will be making one thousand six hundred dollars a week for their thirty-two hour a week job. Our new hire of I S T, I T personnel here in Allentown makes seven hundred and forty-four dollars a week. Maybe that's the reason these positions aren't filled. And since C D W has to go through a thirteen-step hiring process, they're offering up to us from Pearson Computing Company to fill the gap at sixty-eight dollars an hour. That comes out to two thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars a week per technician. And I hope somebody can check my numbers, because it sure seems like a lot of money. I am just hoping for a smooth start to the school year, and it takes all of us working together. And I did, from the last time I spoke here, told you about, I'm hoping that we keep Sapphire. Okay, Melissa, now wait, where are your papers here? Uh, just in case any new board members, I did copy this. This is from September of last year. This was the proposal that we paid, I think, like a hundred thousand dollars to find out if Sapphire was better than. There were four others that we went through, so I do have these. If I give them to Jen, you can all have a copy in case you don't go back into the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we will, we will continue our meeting with the questions. That was where we were. Did any of our board members have any questions regarding the presentation?
I do, so. That was a mouthful.
I, I, and I'm sorry, you saw some excitement from me.
I'm so happy that you showed that excitement, right? I feel like as a parent, I don't think I've ever seen so much excitement in the district, right? So the first thing that I like is how you reference the curriculum audit. We often collect data, but do not reference back to the data, right? So we spend money, we create all of these ideas of what solutions are. They don't work, we don't prototype anything, we just go full force and just pour our money into it. But this presentation, I can clearly see that the homework was done. Like, there's no if, ands, buts about it. I'm very optimistic about the direction the district is going in. Not only were you excited, but I often look at the audience, and I see our educators are excited. They're smiling, they're happy as you're delivering your presentation, so I thank you for that. Another thing that I like in the presentation, you showed how cross-departmental everyone came together. It's not that often where you see all the departments coming together to make sure that we're implementing the right plan, right? Something else that I saw in your presentation is that we're in the education business, we don't often focus on education. But this shows that we're not only focusing on our education for our students, but also focusing on education for our staff, which is a big deal. People often think that once you get your degree as a teacher, that's where education stops. But we're dealing with different generations, so education is an ongoing, continuing thing. You never stop learning until you're in the grade where you can't learn anymore, so I'm thankful for that. Another thing that I noticed is, well, I guess I'm repeating this part, but the engagement between the staff and then just the reflection of what you showed in the presentation. So I do have a few questions, and this question is not a negative question. It may seem like that, because people are always trying to switch things, but this is really not a negative question. As a parent, um, raising all my kids through the district for the most part, what I've noticed is that our teachers have often paid to work, right? In order to teach our students lessons, they will have to take their own finances to go out and provide resources for our students to learn the materials. Does this curriculum provide all the necessary tools for our educators to educate our students without having to spend their money, their personal money that they should be taking care of their families with, and, and spending it on our students?
When I presented that we were, our needs were our students, and we were also looking at our teachers, one of the main things we wanted to ensure was that the curriculum was comprehensive enough so that teachers weren't going to teacher-pay teachers to pull a worksheet from here, or there wasn't a, like, there was nothing to differentiate so that they had to go somewhere else. We are buying from the Benchmark Education Advanced Program, Benchmark Advance, that all the components, including the phonics intervention for our students with disabilities, including the Hello Edition to help our E, English learners access the text. So we are, we are primed to have everything that we need in those curriculums. Study Sync allows you to go in and put a level of a student, so the material adjusts to where that student is, to then come back up to where the core is. Our math resources are also providing multiple of, multiple opportunities of materials that they shouldn't have to go back. And again, getting the materials for our English learners, for our students that are speaking Spanish, those are part of our quotes as well. So I cannot tell you without like a hundred percent, absolutely, but I can tell you that we picked the programs that we felt supported our students the best and our teachers the best. That makes my heart smile, thank you.
Thank you.
They were, my.
I have a question.
I think, um, Harris?
I have a question. Yeah, I do have a question. So I'm elated. Like, I can't believe that we were, we had curriculums that were from like eighteen sixty-five. I'm exaggerating the number, but that's how I felt, that's how I felt. So I'm, I'm really elated about this and excited that we're really moving in the right direction as a district. As we're doing this, I'm looking at the fact that we're making a very heavy investment. We're gonna sign off on this, making the investment, you guys putting all that work, all this research to make this investment to shift what's happening. And I'm wondering, Dr. Burks, if outside of the consultants, if you have your own expectations in the implementation of the curriculum? Because to look, this is a heavy investment, and we want to make sure that the kids are being taught. And nothing against the teachers, I know you guys work very hard and it's heavy, but sometimes we don't stick to the curriculum, and kids fall through the crack like that. So my question is, how are we gonna hold specifically the principals to accountable that the teachers are teaching the actual curriculum?
You know, this is the topic I love the most. So as I've mentioned to the board, and we will come with this structure, we are establishing network improvement communities in which the schools will be assigned to an executive director, and everyone whose works within the central office, their work is aligned to a network improvement community. As a part of that network improvement community, we will engage in instructional rounds. And here's a teaser, because we're gonna come back to you with a proposal. We've asked an expert, he's been doing a little bit of work with us now, who wrote the book on continuous improvement. Uh, he's from Harvard, he spent many years at Harvard University, Dr. Lee Tidaway even gave you a copy of his book. And so we are going to in, uh, introduce this continuous improvement process in which we will look at practice, we'll make modifications with practice as a collective. So teams will come in, and we'll even invite you to come in and look at instructional practices, make predictions, and, and um, the next level work will be apparent, and we will keep information on those data uh, and what we're finding in a space in which the board and everyone can look at. Additionally, we will implement, and this will come back, come to you soon too, uh, data-wise, which is a continuous improvement process. And when we are going to be looking at data on a consistent basis, everyone within the organization at our academic, as well as our behavioral uh outcomes consistently, so that we are monitoring and engaging what we call school quality reviews, because these are practices in which we're not doing across the organization to date. And so, and there will be lots of professional learning. And we also uh need to hire some more staff, because we haven't, I just want to, full transparency, because we like that word. Um, we have consultants, because we don't have the internal capacity. And I want to thank the, the team that's, they're retired educators, so none of them want, they don't want these jobs full-time, but they come with a great deal of expertise, and we had to gear up. And I, and I want to thank, and I want to say this, and of course, every, all of our board members give us, you give us lots of insights, but I have to say, I thank Ms. Conover for giving us lots of feedback through this process. She asked a lot of questions, and told us she wanted us to go back. And so we thank you for that, and helping us to make sure that we were covering and looking at materials. And I mean, you would think Mrs. Miss Conover was, you know, had her doctorate a few times in some of those conversations. But, but I'm just seasoning her, but with that said, um, so we intend to be very intentional, and we're going to hold everyone accountable, and we're going to report to you our successes and some of our areas of growth. We have to be mindful, we have not done this, and that's why I said this. And if, if reporters want to get soundbites on something that's important, that this district is investing more than twenty million dollars in curricula to make a difference of the lives of children. That's, that's a headline, in my view.
And I approve that message.
I have a question. Oh, sorry.
Um, the, um, Mr. Palmer and then Mrs. Ortiz. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just needed some clarification on some stuff. You mentioned the, uh, well, first off, I want to say I'm excited to. I don't want that to be, that anyone thinks any different. Also, I didn't realize, uh, Ms. Griffin was back there, I'm Ms. Griffin, I didn't see you back there. Um, but, uh, so you mentioned that, uh, if we approve this now, by the time the school year starts to Go Math, they would be able to, uh, start implementing that, but how long is the training process?
So Go Math is our current, what we have been using for elementary math. So that you already approved and is in order, so that's not, that's not part of this. What I was saying by, um, the materials ordered, so Benchmark A, A, Advance for our elementary, um, classrooms, there's about twelve boxes of materials that are going into each of our classrooms, and they're guaranteeing that delivery so that when our teachers come back, those materials are there. And I can say that because our representative is back there, and then he has guaranteed that piece for me. Um, the same thing with our math for that, um, the six twelve math for them to be, or I'm sorry, six plus algebra, Algebra Two and Geometry Math, those materials will be in the buildings by the middle of August. So it was very important for us that we were getting the materials that our teacher needs and, um, our students need in time for the start of the school year. That's why when I said those little preview sessions start next week, because teachers are excited and they kind of want to see what those materials are. But the real implementation P D will start in the fall, and we will continue to embed, like, when this teachers come back, but P D will be ongoing um, with it and wrapped around best practices in instruction. So it's not just about the program, it's also about the instruction that goes with utilizing the program. So it's going to be professional development, professional development, professional development, um, as we move through this.
Okay, so the implementation will be a little bit later, okay.
In August, when the teachers come back.
Okay. And I had one other question. When you were mentioning adjusting for the Study Sync, how would that, I guess, work when you're going from like a, a eighth to ninth grade kind of thing?
So in our middle schools, they're following the Study Sync program with the materials and getting used to the online materials as well as the print materials. By the time they get to high school, they're going to know, okay, this is how I submit an essay. This is how I respond to a question, this is how we do this work in Study Sync. When we get to high school, we go to our themes, but we're going to have the Study Sync texts to support the themes that our English teachers use. So the whole point of the six to twelve alignment is so those routines and practices that come with the program are carried through from middle school to high school, so they're not coming in as a freshman and not knowing a, a program. They're going to see the same program, like, the same structure of a program that they saw in middle school, which we have never done.
All right, that's what I thought you were saying, but I just wanted to make sure, okay. Uh, that, that was all the questions.
And Mrs. Ortiz?
So, um, thank you, everybody, uh, for putting all the hard work into this. Um, I think this is great, and I appreciate you all. Um, my question is not meant in a negative way, it's just, um, a general question. These programs, um, specifically the math program, um, is there something in there for kids who, um, are learning delayed, who may not be ready for algebra, who may still be learning at an elementary school math level? Um, are there things in these programs that will help them kids um, if they're not ready for a certain area?
Yes, and part of the program for the Reveal Math, which is from six to twelve, is that Alex technology, which does bring it down to a student's level and helps support the differentiation. In addition, there is reteaching. Again, we really looked at programs that had the high expectations for our students, but also support for our students. So yes, there will be opportunities for, um, there are materials to support that. And you're not here, but our teachers that are here, we have our algebra, ninth grade algebra teacher Frank McGee here, who's excited about these programs from Alan, because he knows they're going to be, he, these, this program will meet his students' needs.
And that's what I was meaning, because, you know, specifically, my daughter is going into sixth grade. Um, but she's not even close to a sixth grade math level, so that was my concern. You know, I didn't want them throwing algebra at her when she's not even, she's not even close to us, to that level. So that was my concern, thank you.
And also, Mrs. Ortiz, I'll also say that, that we, at the middle school level, we have math instructional coaches, so they will be working with teachers to support teachers in that implementation, so that students like your daughter are supported.
Thank you, and thank you all so much again for putting all the effort into this, it really means a lot. And I, I appreciate all your effort.
Thank you, Mrs. Ortiz. I just want to make a comment, um, everybody knows that I'm, I'm, it's, I'm happy to hear what's going on as it relates to education. And I know you've guys heard me say we're housing students, you've heard me say things like, our kids are graduating and they're not prepared. We've had people come from like the Electrical Union and say, we want to hire your, your students when they come out, but they can't. This, this is something that has been discussed over the years, but they can't get past the simple math. And then, then being on this board and being in the community and speaking to parents, you know, you're in the, in the wagon zone, Price Right or whatever, and they walk up to you and they begin to talk to you about their problems. Eventually, you begin to, you know, some things Ray Charles can see, right? You see what those problems are, and so what it comes. And so what it comes down to is that we were not, and we're owning it, I am anyway, preparing our students the, that way that we should. And it was always an excuse as to why, either we don't have the money, the teachers don't have the resources, people are just burnt. And these are probably real excuses, but real reasons, right? And so what we're doing as a board and as an education committee, it's like, listen, let's start with the excuses. The things that we can do, let's do. Let's hold ourselves accountable. I hear, I know that our teachers are stressed. I know that the Allentown School District has a salary imbalance. But that's not something that happened last night and it's not going to be fixed. But what we're looking for is the people who are really vested in our community to come here and ride with us. You know, we, we heard a lot, you know, I got an email from somebody about exit interviews. I heard all of that stuff. And I agree, you guys know where many of us stand as that, as it relates to that. But our goal here is to educate our students. And so I'm extremely happy about what we're doing because we're addressing those, those deficits. And many people are gonna be angry about it and say they don't want to do it because it's too much work, right? But because we haven't done the work and it's going to be a little different. It's like me getting up and going to the gym in the morning, right? But if I keep doing it, it's going to work. So I'm saying this to say, hang in there with us, okay? We want our kids to be able to compete globally. When my, I'm, I'm just going to tell a really, really short, when my daughter, this is a parent, went to college two years ago. That first semester, she got all these accolades you guys were running. Oh my God, she's going to be so mad at me. You guys were really supporting. She did her part. She got up five o'clock in the morning. She was a studier, right? But I was afraid that after that first semester that she wasn't going to make the grade. And she's still dingsly. But I'm telling you, not to give her accolades or, she came from Allentown, but to say that what we put in is what comes out. And if we don't invest in our kids, what, even if we gotta go home and eat a bologna sandwich tonight, right? Or not eat. What we put in is what comes out. And so I just wanted to share that, that's, and I, and I thank you for your passion, Missy, because I know your team, this district. I've been on those Zoom calls. I can't tell you, I've been in every room. I'd be on Zoom a lot. But um, uh, you guys are doing it and I appreciate it. And I do approve the message of educating our students and paying what it takes to get them educated. Because I want to be, when I'm old, I want to look back and say, hey, we did it. Not me, it ain't about me. I want to say we collectively did it.
I have a comment.
Just a quick, Dr. Burke.
Okay.
Defer to Dr. Santana.
Just real quick, not, not a question, just kudos to Dr. Burke and the entire academic team. As an educator, I'm ready to do a backflip, but you don't want to see that. But I'm thrilled. I'm really, really excited about this. So thank you.
You want to go or you want? Okay. My, my comment is, as we continue to reimagine, because that's what I heard as you gave your presentation and you, I felt like you was preaching for a second.
I might have been, but I'm not ordained.
I feel like we're talking about reimagining the district and possibly becoming a model city, right, for education. But what I also want to say is, as we continue to use data, right, to be data driven and come up with solutions like this curriculum, we will then see our safety issues become minimized because now we're educating our students. And then they have less time to be bored and less time to engage in unethical, illegal or whatever kind of negative activity and focus more on achieving the goals that they want for their life. So I just, it came to my mind and I had to say it. So thank you.
Dr. Burke, real quick, because it, it ties in with, with what you just said, Ms. Brown. Um, I agree with you. And to that, I want to add that we have to make sure that we have engagement from our parents, because if our parents are not engaged, we could spend 20 million, 50 million, 100 million. If, if we don't have the communication and the engagement of parents, this isn't going to work. So we need to also work on that.
So this is our education committee meeting. This is our meeting, right? And you're absolutely right. So just to give you a sneak peek, peek today, we're, we're discussing what needs to go towards, to, to the board for approval so that we can get that ball rolling. But there's definitely, um, we're, we're looking to engage our, our, our partners, our parents. I mean, some parents work four jobs and they can't come. But I'm one of those parents that's willing to be sitting in the library with their kids for a couple of hours and make sure they get it. We're looking for community partners and parents for us to team up and to be able to get those students where they need to be. Because if I can't be in, in two places at one time, maybe you can in my stead. And that's what it does. That's what it means when they say it takes a village. To, to raise a child, you know, and so that's definitely what we're looking to do. We also looking to reach back to those that we graduated. You know, because they still belong to us and we still have an obligation to, to educate them. So when we have all these nonprofits in our community that's saying that they want to do the thing, everybody, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We just need to play our position and do our part. So we, tonight is about what we have on the agenda. But that other, the, what you're talking about and what you're talking about, Ms. Brown, we are definitely, um, pursuing that. So I just want to be able to make, make note of that.
And in order for us to engage our graduates, we have to make sure, I'm sorry, I have a minute in my mouth. We have to make sure that our students leave with a positive um, recollection of their experience while they were here. Because if they don't, they're not coming back.
Thank you so much. Dr. Burks?
Ms. Conover, just respectfully, I just liked the, everyone that was involved in the process, okay, we could just have them stand and recognize the staff that's been working really hard on this effort for us.
I'm going to say thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much. I'm so honored to serve with you. I'm so excited. I'm so, so excited. So thank you and thank you, Ms. Smith, for your leadership. Ms. Smith was, was getting in a groove there, wasn't she? So thank you.
May I ask you something?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Um, I was listening to you and about, you know, our girl. My question to you, Missy, is how are we going to implement this in Building 21?
Materials had been purchased or will be purchased for Building 21. Um, the social studies materials, they will be using because it's online access. They will also be able to access study sync for that. And we will be working with the math to um, begin to implement a math at Building 21 as well.
Thank you, because that was not my son's experience. He had awful experience at Building 21. He was not able, like Lisa's daughter, to stay in college. Because he wasn't prepared. So now, thank goodness, he's decided to go to Lincoln Tech and he's going for medical assistant and his, 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 and his goal is to be an RN, but he has to do step by step by step because he wasn't taught in the high school. So I thank you for bringing this to Building 21 because that's necessary. And we need to have more oversight on that. So thank you. Does, I have a question. I'm still learning. Um, Building 21 has a different curriculum? Yes, it does. By comprehension, it's totally different. It was a school that was implemented for entrepreneurship. And it started out great the first year. First year was great. I, I'm kind of sort of familiar with Building 21, but I didn't realize that they follow a different curriculum than ours. And we pay for that. A lot of money.
Thank you. So in, 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 this concludes our questions. Do anyone have any other questions? Okay, so may I have a motion to move those five items to?
I'll second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Are there any opposes? These five items move to our regular board meeting, next regular, um, board meeting. And then, um, I think we had our discussion. So, all right, so at this time, thank you very much, Mrs. Smith. At this time, I'm going to ask for, um, we need you to do for the Zern renewal, Missy.
So this is not going through now? We got to send it to the next board meeting?
So Zern is not actually a renewal. Zern was part of the recommendations for our math, um, program, for our math at the elementary.
Can we, can we let the record reflect? Because that was a typo, because it's here and here as a renewal.
Okay. We had a pilot this year, but it was not a full implementation across all our buildings.
So Dr. Burks? So on the, on the agenda, it's, it's as a renewal. So can we strike the word renewal? Or is that a renewal? Can you explain it? Part of the presentation. But it's on our just.
I'm, I apologize. I did not catch that there was a renewal on underneath the Zern math.
You see it?
Yeah, it's there.
It's there. Okay. So we're, you, you did everything, but I'm just making, mentioning that we have the renewals. We have two renewals. But that's Jim Brian though.
Correct.
Did you be sitting in for her?
No, Jim Brian is ready to, to go. Zern was part of the recommendation there. Um, do you want me to talk a little bit about Zern?
No, I think you talked about it. But I just want to know, so we're going to ask if we can move, um, item number six, the renewal to the next board meeting, because I only did one through five.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
So we'll. Are there any opposes? I mean, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. I'm sorry. Are there any, I got, um, Nancy and Palmer. Are there any opposes? So number six also moves forward to our next regular.
Thank you.
Board meeting. Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Um, now I'm asking that, um, item number seven, eight, nine, and we're going to do the same for 10. Is that correct? 11, 12, no, 11. So we're going to do seven through 11, which is pre-kindergarten material request for approval. These items are Scholastic Pre-Kindergarten Curriculum Program. Um, number eight is pre-kindergarten classroom furniture. And then number nine is Hatch Technology Tables for pre-kindergarten classrooms. And then that was under Melissa, but you're going to do it for her, right?
Sure.
Okay. And then it's, um, Community Services for Children Head Start Renewal Agreement. Can we take all those together?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much. Um, Mrs. Bryant, you may proceed.
Sure. Um, good evening. Um, so tonight, the first item, uh, that I'd like to discuss, and we also, if you have any specific questions, um, we have Scholastics National Education Director, um, on the call with us. Um, if need be, her name is Kathy Yunt. Um, but tonight, I'd like to request approval to purchase the Scholastic Kindergarten, Pre-Kindergarten Program on my way um, to help us support the teaching and learning in the eight classrooms that we'll be introducing in this upcoming school year. So in this program, it's a comprehensive program, meaning it's going to provide social emotional learning. It's going to provide access to social studies, to science, math, and also literacy and language development for our pre-K students. This is an approved pre-K program in the state of Pennsylvania. It aligns to early learning standards. It will target the key academic, social, and emotional domains that we know are linked to higher achievement outcomes for students. Um, and this program specifically addresses early learning through engagement in culturally diverse read-alouds, guided activities, and purposeful play. So the cost of the program is $43,681. Are any questions?
No questions.
Okay. I have a comment.
Sure.
I'm so happy we're doing this, right? My, I mean, we don't, not that I need to make it a personal story, but only my oldest kid was able to attend pre-K full day. And the impact that it has on our students is amazing. We have to start while they're early. So I thank you just for coming, presenting, and just sharing this information with us.
Thank you. Um, so we're also very excited. Another part of building out this program at this introductory level is the next item is seeking your approval to purchase furniture and classroom enrichment materials um, that will support, uh, our new pre-K classrooms. Um, the classroom furniture that we're bringing in is going to allow for flexibility. It's going to allow for student grouping, independent work, interactivity. Teacher tables are going to be right on whiteboard surfaces. Other enrichment activities, um, will be things that, while the curricular program from Scholastic does incorporate all manipulatives, our teachers are not going to be asked to purchase something to align. Comes with a classroom library, also parent resources, I should say, for helping to engage and, and do work at home. But the enrichment materials in our furniture purpose are all, purchase are also things that will help build out the classroom space. Make it welcoming, um, give kids, again, additional purposeful play activities, which is how we know early learning happens best. Um, the cost of these materials is $101,830. Any questions about the furniture?
I have a quick comment. Thank you. So I had no idea that we started doing this pre-K in the summer. Because I was able to go to Central and Annamay Hayes and I saw that they had the pre-K summer program. It is the cutest thing. Like they were so engaged, they were learning, they were doing their reading. And it really just goes to show like, wow, if we start them early, it, it's just amazing. So kudos to you guys with that. I thought we were starting it in the fall. I don't know how I missed that. But just getting to be able to see it in action, it is, it is amazing.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Um, I, uh, oh, I, um, I, I like that we're, obviously I'm a fan of us doing this. I thought that we would get like, um, maybe like a, a picture of what some of this looked like or like a, I don't know, a mock-up or something. I just, because I, I, I can't picture like what this would all look like, I guess.
Sure. We, we do have a mock-up that we can get you. I apologize. I don't have something handy with me at the moment. But if you'd like me to follow up, we can provide classroom mock-ups for, for all of you so that you can begin to get a sense of what the final classroom design will look like.
Okay.
Is that helpful?
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to see what this is going to look like before we do it. Yes.
Sure.
And the interactive tables.
Yeah, that too. Like I want to see what the table looks like and everything.
Sure.
There were no pictures.
Thank you so much, Mr. Palmer. Uh, Ms. Harris? Patrick, now, no. We got to make sure, we're just happy that we're finally the, finally the ones doing this. I know you won that, but we are doing something that no one else is doing, is we're getting that pre-K before everybody else. So the reason why I'm saying this is, the charter schools do not have this pre-K. They don't have our new policy to make sure that our children can go into pre-K at a certain age. So to my Allentown School District families, come on back. Because we are doing something, this is innovative. We are making sure, everything we have presented, everything we have presented tonight with the policy and the education is something that no one else is doing. Yes, I am, I am pro-public, pro-public. Please remember, they are not scoring better than ASD. Their scores are not better than ours. Some of them are worse. So please remember, and please look at these things that if you, when you look on board docs, we are game changing. We are changing the games for our students. And we're going to make sure that we're going to be the number one school district in Pennsylvania. And we got Dr. Burke who's going to be leading, leading the march. Thank you, Mrs. Harris. Uh, is there anyone else?
And I just want to say to Ms. Harris' point, I, I would love, even if we use that for advertising too, like a picture and the teacher is like on the board or something. I mean, I feel like that would be a good flyer or something that we can send out.
You're right, you're right.
So, um, the next item, um, listed is the Hatch Technology Tables. This is one of Dr. Burke's personal favorite items that we're bringing forward. Um, these are eight Ignite Tables along with the licenses to support our 160 students. So you may hear table and equate to furniture, while it is a tabletop design. It is actually an interactive, um, technology table for students by which they can stand around, but they can have, um, interactions with that table. Um, the, the. Um, the, the table has software features that support um, a variety of competencies that we hope to grow in our young learners. Um, the cost of these tables is eighty thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars.
Worth every penny.
Any questions on the tables?
Any questions? Keep going.
Is, is it like the purple, big purple table? Is that what it looks like?
Is it?
They come in all different colors.
I mean, there could be.
We're looking at it on the.
Yeah.
Think like old-fashioned sand table, like everyone's around it doing something, but it's like tech surface. Thank you. Wow. So um, the next two items then that I'm presenting continue our early learning theme, but this is around our collaborations with partners to help sustain more engagement um, out of our community. Um, the first item then is our renewal of our agreement with Community Services for Children, which is the Valley's provider of um, Head Start, and this is our collaboration with them to provide Head Start classrooms onsite in our buildings. These classrooms are located at Hayes, Jackson, Lincoln, which is the site of K-6 Newcomer, and Ramos Elementary. So those rooms will serve up to ninety-six children and their families for this school year.
Question for the, we talking about community service for children? And you getting ready to do LVCC, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, my question's gonna come to them.
Sure. So there is no um, cost to us associated with CSC. Um, the, the rooms are in kind, their usage. Um, if uh, there is any adult meal um, service, uh, we are, we invoice CSC for that. The next, oh, any questions other than that? The next item then is um, with Lehigh Valley Childcare, LVCC. In this agreement, um, it is between the district and LVCC to provide onsite childcare at two locations within our district. Um, one is the program that goes on at William Allen, which is a program that helps our students also return to the classroom who have had children of their own. So there's onsite, onsite childcare there as well as Mullenberg Elementary School, which is before and after care for students who attend um, at that building. So there are tuition costs like any childcare um, that are issued out by LVCC um, which have a varying range, and those costs that have been updated for this school year were included in your materials.
So my question, this is the gain program. Do our students pay tuition for that? I didn't, I didn't look at that.
Um, it's within like the childcare. I don't know if it's gain proper, but it's within the childcare um, offering. So Allen is included within the tuition rate scale um, that is uh, encompassed within Lehigh County. So I, my assumption is yes, there are, there are costs with that, but Charles, Mr. Dofrio is, is here.
So I had.
Please do.
Yeah.
Everyone, um, so for the Allen program, um, the school district uh, writes a grant for the elect program. And specifically in that grant, the LVCC is supporting that grant um, to provide this teen uh, parent program. In that grant specifically, it uh, assesses a co-pay of five dollars per student to teach them the understanding that care isn't just free. And they get put on to childcare work subsidy, and they understand that support and that resource. And so what happens is that five dollar co-pay is paid to um, the Early Learning Research Center, essentially in Lehigh County. If there is a parent that can't afford that five dollars, LVCC will just cover fully that scholarship. But until they get onto CCW, we're paying for them. It's just once they get on CCW, it's just to teach that one kind of valuable lesson that this isn't free, this is a resource, and you have to pay for that.
That's all well and good. We got babies having babies.
Correct. And as I said, if there, if, sorry to cut you off, if, if someone couldn't do that, we would certainly cover that.
So is that presented to our parents? Because if you can't do that, then you know, this is an option for you?
It is um, for.
Are you sure?
Yes, but for twenty years now, it's been written into the elect grant as this is a component of the program, and we want to have them somewhat accountable.
That's.
So it's just historically, that is how that works.
Okay. Just thank you.
I agree with that. Um, I, one, I'm a comment and then I ask a question. I agree with that because that teach them life skills, and eventually they're gonna have to pay some type of child care bill. But my question is, do some of those parents also receive Title 20 or are they?
That, that is.
That is.
Yeah, the old Title 20.
Okay.
They also uh, in our other centers, they would have to provide diapers and wipes. We provide that as well.
Okay.
So there are a lot of supports and resources, and you'll find um, that they're grateful to have this. Um, we haven't had um, always since two thousand and seventeen, have to cover anyone as a full scholarship, and that was a homeless case. And we certainly did that, provided clothes and all of those resources for those families. So again, it's a rare case, but we're willing to do it if it happened.
Well, I don't look at it as grateful. I think it is something that we as a school district, when that policy was made for the gain program, that it is part of what we do for our students by any means necessary to succeed.
Okay, I'm done. You're done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the other, the, the question that I had was, was this, did they have another site that was moved? Because I, because remember, I never got that question, the slot question.
Yeah.
Yes, and my, and my apologies for that. That's email that I need to send to you, but if Mr. Charles, you can answer that, please.
So yeah, and, and I just wanna guess, because when it comes to kids, right, they're all kids. We had a site, you had a classroom at a site, and then that was moved or whatever. So my, the reason my question is, did we lose slots or did we gain?
Um, well, and to be totally open and honest with, with the board and, and the ASD team, um, the school district has really amped up um, their after-school program. Um, I go to Mullenberg sometimes to pop into that program, and you have four or five clubs going on at a time, which is great for us too, because what happens is you have working families that now can take advantage of those clubs and those resources. Because then when the club is done at four, five o'clock, we can still accept those children. At Ritter,
Mm-hmm.
the program decreased. Um, it started in the late nineties, and it's, and it was booming. And then um, in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, we took away the AM program because the district decided that they were gonna do a full free breakfast, and that took off. Parents started to see that, and it was earlier than most breakfasts started. And so we lost kids in the AM, so we moved it to the PM. When we were in the PM, that kind of was continuing, but as the district grew different programs, Title 20 programs and after-school programs, we were only receiving one to two children a year. So we did it for two years to just kind of figure it out and everything else. Um, and it didn't work out. We had, we ended up with one child this year out of, out of the entire school. Um, positives for that, for the district is you have the resources that the families are using. The other positive is there's other providers in that area that are picking up children and not needing the care. And as I told Dr. Burks many of times that we've talked, and all of your other ASD team, we're only here to support the need. We're not here to just be here.
Right.
Here until we're not needed. And then if we're needed two years down the line and you come to us, we'll certainly start the program back.
Well, thank you so much for um, providing me with that information. But that was my reason. So you answered my question. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Great. Are you done?
That was the last.
That was the last one. So um, may I have a motion?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Thank you. Thank you so much for this.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposes? Hearing and seeing, and this moves forward to our next regular board meeting. Thank you again, um, Ms. Bryant. At this time, I'm gonna ask that Mrs. Greiter, Lisa Greiter comes forth. And she's gonna be, um, this is a presentation, uh, this is an action item as well, and it's about LAS links, Lost Links.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. Um, tonight I'd like to request the board's approval to renew the purchase of Lost Links licenses to progress monitor the language acquisition of English learners in all of ASD schools at a projected cost of one hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Last Links is an online assessment that's designed to progress monitor English learners in grades K to twelve. It offers access to language data and reports that help to inform linguistic uh, instruction. Last Links is administered to our English learners three times per year um, in the fall, early winter, and again in the spring. It measures the language progress of our students in four domains, listening, reading, excuse me, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. It also provides us with an overall composite for the student's language growth, um, information about their literacy, comprehension, and productive skills. Um, this purchase also addresses findings in the ASD's curriculum audit concerning assessment of English learners. Do you have any questions?
No, hearing, there are no questions. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? This moves forward to our next regular board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'm gonna ask for Dr. Diana Mitchell to come forth. And um, this is also an action item, Technology Requests for Information Technology Staffing Services, RFP.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, Vice Mayor, Members Directors, Superintendent Burks. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Where my presentation update team? We are requesting a proposal for Information Technology Staffing Services.
Hmm, Dr. Bitchu.
Yes.
Can we, I, I would like to pause. Can we just take like a three-minute um, break for the ladies room? Because I want everybody to be present, please, of the men's room. So we're gonna take like five minutes?
Because we wanna be here for.
I know it was at the end, but this is a whole presentation and you know.
You have a studio. Be right back. Yeah, because I already been.
No. No, whatever. I have like the getting down with him. You're alone later. Um, I asked the questions. People, I have a question for the.
I would just wanna say the whole thing. Just work like that. I'll just take.
She's always cool. We make fun of her. She always wraps up and has her heater on. Don't you have a little heater up there?
I think it's uh, perfectly, perfect.
I know, I'm comfortable.
I keep the same, always. Yeah, we keep the same temperature in our house, you know, summer, yeah, all year round. Did you move yet?
So you moved June first.
Okay.
Twenty minutes. Not bad at all. It's a really easy drive.
Thank you. So we're requesting, um, we are presenting a proposal for Information Technology Staffing Services. The current state of the Allentown School District Technology Department is we have four networking techs, one vacancy, we have nine building techs, five vacancy, and we have five contracted temporary techs. These seventeen dedicated staff members, we are expected to serve and maintain efficient technology services for twenty-four buildings, fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six students, one hundred and twenty-eight administrators, one thousand, five hundred and sixty-five teachers. one thousand, five hundred and sixty-five teachers, and to the forty-two staff members. I'm going to let everybody just sink that in right now. Which means we are responsible for every laptop, every desktop, every paramecium board, anything with a plug, payroll services, apps to monitor our networking rooms, cell phones, alarm systems, video conferencing, everything. We need help. An RFP was prepared and released to find immediate staff to support technology services. And I didn't even mention the Weber because when the process was updating our website as well. Um, we do not have an engineer on staff in a district this large with technology. Seeking network engineer, we are seeking end user supports. And we're seeking help for our tech, uh, our techs. Some of our techs service two and three buildings. At our high schools, we have one tech. Can you imagine one tech at Allen High School? It can be a lot for a person. And they run from the time they get in and from the time they leave with help tickets and people just stopping and saying, hey, can I get a minute? The response of the RFP was for twenty-two vendors. CDWG, they've been around for years. I've been at it for twenty-nine years. They were around when I was teaching. We were buying stuff from them when I was in, started in the classrooms. They were success, um, uh, selected because of their success in providing staffing resources for Allentown School District. And they are a leading multi-brand provider of information technology to businesses, government, education, healthcare, customers in the United States, the United Kingdom, and Canada. They are very large and they do it all and they do it well. Rational, that spoke about their significant experience in supporting large Pennsylvania school districts. Their superior expertise in all aspects of technology and infrastructures. And they are well positioned, I want to repeat that, they are well positioned to provide immediate staffing um, sourced by our local partners, Pearson, at the levels that we need. While they were not the lowest, uh, they were not the least expensive, but their average cost was comparable. Their staff sources by CDW can be converted to permanent Allentown School Districts after six months with no conversion fees. We have, uh, our temporary, uh, staffing. We have hired about three or four of them. Again, they have immediate staff. They provide flexibility with addressing emerging staffing needs. And they have a strong financial stability to provide services, products, and support to both the public and the private sectors. And I'm going to go back to. Okay.
Yeah, hold on.
Okay.
Normally we'll wait for the questions, but do you have a problem if we could just, because we want to make sure, for me, and I know you have a question, I want to make sure that I'm understanding the language. Um, number one, when it comes to acronyms, I wear a thousand hats, so we have to be clear, but I got that part. But when you said conversion fees, can you let us?
Yeah, some companies charge when you, when you contract out with them and hire their companies. Our current, um, partner, Robert Hoss, when you, um, hire their people, they charge a fee. And that's included in what they have, but I want to go back up and put up this slide right here because this tells the story.
I, I got that part. And, and so since we talking and I'm going to talk to my colleagues, right? So, because I know, I hear a lot. I've been around for a little bit of time. When we begin to contract with, um, vendors, first thing somebody say, they paying that vendor this much money when they can just hire somebody in the district to pay it. But these vendors, they charge an amount, but we don't have to pay benefits and, and all that other stuff. So those are factors. And so, you know, you know, I'm, I'm going to constantly, you know, we have to figure out a way. I'm talking about not just us nine, right? The community, we got to figure out how we can get those resources that we need so we can get away from the vendors. So I got that part. Um, I just wanted to know what those, those fees were, but I know Ms. Harris had a question.
And Dr. Burks is helping with that with her partnership with Hampton University. Getting our people to grow and go up and get their degrees and get some skills. So I'm very proud of that.
But then what about the money? I'm talking about the money to pay them. Because we pull somebody in here making fifty thousand dollars a year and then the person next door is making two hundred dollars. And I'm just throwing these numbers out. I have no idea what he's getting paid. But I'm just saying it becomes an issue, right? And so.
Uh, yes, Ms. Conover, I agree with you. Right now, there's an immediate need to staff up so that we're prepared for the opening of school. And so that's why we're presenting the vendor to, to the, the board for its consideration. And with it, we just don't have enough staff. And we are, uh, Ms. Richards, I've asked her to work with me closely about looking at, and Ms. Ramos, um, looking at our current staffing structure and to present to the board a budget of what it costs to increase salaries across the district so that we are competitive and we're able to, uh, attract staff and, and sustain and retain them in the district. So yes, and that's one on, on one part of her thirty-day, sixty, ninety-day plan. That's one of the items on there. Because I agree with you, but at right now, if we don't staff up, we just will not be ready because there's so many devices, so many things, and we just don't have, have the staff.
So we'll have this awesome curriculum that we talked about. And we have these wonderful kids that we're sending, but we won't have the staff to be able to carry out the plan. And then here it is. Six months from now, we'll be saying, well, what happened? How come you didn't? This is, this, it's a puzzle and you have to have all the pieces to the puzzle. And so this is the reason why I'm pointing it. I normally, I try not to stop you in the middle of your presentation. But I've got to, we have to put a pin in it. You know, we need this because we are going to educate our kids this year. And we're going to keep going. But we need this, so I'm, I'm dipping it.
And may, Ms. Phoebe, did you want to ask a question that, where you? Uh, I just want to, uh, as it relates to conversion fee, I just wanted to break some, um, clarify that. You know, sometimes when you contract with companies, they charge you, like if you hire our staff, we're going to charge you fifty percent to hire our staff, that, and we're paying the money and we hired the staff. You know, and you're like, wait a minute. Or they say you can't hire our staff for a year. For, but with this particular company, there isn't a conversion fee to do that if the staff decides to stay with us. Now, but our structure is not that we could probably be competitive at the moment. They would want to stay with us, but they're not imposing a fee.
We've been knowing about this quite a while. We've been losing staff in IT for quite some time, quite some time since I got on here in two thousand seventeen. Why haven't we looked at their pay structure sooner? Now that we have to, we don't got no choice right now because of what's going on. And like you said, we have got this new curriculum. We have got these things going. Why are we just looking at it just now? We've been losing staff because of money, because they've been going to other places and making more money. So to my one employee and to our CFO, why are we waiting?
Is that rhetorical or would you like for me to respond?
No.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it should have been done a long time ago. I know that it's doing its na, we're doing it now, and I thank you for it, for doing it now. However, this is where we fell again. And, you know, I thank you for, you know, getting up and running with this. But why we got to keep playing catch-up?
Is that?
Yeah.
Only reason why I said is that rhetorical, because, you know, we have employee groups. So certain decisions, and I'll let the solicitor explain it because he can do it much more eloquently than I can, because it's what he does all day. But we can't just say, we're going to pay this one group of employees money and public education, and we'll get into trouble because we have to look at across the entire organization. So that's just our real honest response. But we think that we need to increase salaries across the organization to figure out that.
All right.
So thank you.
We can't get around it. This, this, because my kid is in the school and all the kids are, your kids are in the school, right? And it's our job to make sure that they get what it is that they need. And if we're not, I'm not going to go down that. I think everybody got it. So I'm going to let you keep going.
Oh, that's like to say real quickly, Dr. Mitchell, I'm sorry. I want to, I want to acknowledge the fact that we're playing offense and not defense right now. So we need to, we need to remember that.
We're not COVID.
Good point. Right. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you so much. I think this is the last item. Okay, I got really comfortable. Um, may I have a motion to move this, um, to our next regular board meeting?
So move.
May, I have a second. Um, any discussion? All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Here in CNN, this moves to our next regular board meeting. At this time, we're taking, um, public comments on non-agenda items only. Do we have any cards? We don't have any cards at this time. Um, is there any new business to come before the board? Is, no, may I have a motion?
No, there's some old business I like.
There's old business? Is there any old business?
Yes. Um, I wanted to go back to the United Way. Um, one of the things that Marcy Lesko said to us while she was presenting to us, um, with, um, the MOU is that, that the United Way Board would be hiring, putting Hispanic people, a Hispanic person on the board. The board members came out, there was not one Hispanic person on there. So I'm sorry, but to me, she lied to my face. She lied to our Allentown city. And I'm not happy about that. So they can come here and they can talk whatever they want to talk, but nevertheless, they, she said it. She said it to all of us that there, there was going to be a Hispanic person put on the board and it was a lie. And I don't appreciate it whatsoever. My father always said, if you lie, you steal. That's what we learned growing up. So you tell me how you knew, because you already knew who you were going to put on your board, but you lied to my face so you can get out of here because I was giving you the questions that should have been answered because you were not, did not, didn't want to. I don't know what it was, but you did not support my Hispanic community. And that is a problem for me.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Is that it?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, more.
Second.
Second. Thank you so much. This concludes our education committee of the whole. I was going to. Funny. No. We're going to the regular. Yeah, fine. Sorry.
I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the Board of Directors for the School District of the City of Allentown for today, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-fourth. The board walkers and any vice public comment, you may address the board on agenda and for non-agenda items. First, I'm going to give a comment. If that could be given as a communication, I just want it to agenda items all the way. Uh, comment cards for now or for later, you can turn me down. Please do that. If you choose to address the board, please fill out the comment card and hand it to the board secretary and his colleagues, great good answers. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and hopefully win the prize.
Ms. Brown?
Present.
Ms. Conover?
Present.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Matheson?
Here.
Ms. Brown Noel?
Here.
Ms. Ortiz?
Here.
Mr. Palmer? Dr. Santana?
Here.
Ms. Wilt?
Here.
Nine members present.
To supply the United States of America and to the Republic which stands a nation under God, invisible with liberties and justice for all.
Madam Superintendent, do you have any remarks this evening?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Good night, everyone. So today is National Internship Day. Yes! So today we had an opportunity to have lunch and celebrate our one hundred and fifteen suited interns. Um, they are working throughout the district and the community. They are making money. Um, and engaging in professional learning. So we had a great celebration. I want to thank everyone involved, our team, and I want to thank you, uh, Ms. Jerritana. Um, the subway was good. I had my tomato and a cheese sandwich today. So, and so thank you. And the students were excited and they didn't complain. And it's one, one of the offerings that we're offering as part of our food and nutrition program. And so no one said anything. And I want to thank, uh, Ms. Phoebe, as well as Ms. Wilt, for joining us in the celebration. It was a lot of fun. And it just was amazing what the students learned and they were very gracious and happy to be a part. And we, we share with them that they are now employees of the school district. So not only am I their superintendent, I'm also their CEO. And so, and so it was like an exciting day. Uh, we are also happy that in August fifteenth, everyone say August fifteenth?
August fifteenth.
We will have our back-to-school bash at Cedar Beach Park. We have, um, sent lots of letters and appeals to all of our community partners uh, throughout the community as well, of course, all of our staff. You are welcome to be there. And of course, our children and families. We are going to have an amazing time. We're going to have face painting and lots of food, free food, it'll be free. Uh, and with vendors providing information, we will distribute backpacks a, as well as other school resources. So we are excited. So we're looking forward to seeing everyone August fifteenth. And we have such, we've had such an overwhelming, uh, response um, from our partners that my team is saying, Dr. Burks, we can't let anyone else be a vendor. I'm like, yes, we can. And so, but if anyone is interested, please tonight, unless you, if you want a table, please tonight email us at superintendent@allentownSD. Ms. Reese doesn't know, but she's going to respond to that bell box from me. And so if you want a vendor table, but if you would like to donate backpacks and resources and food and all kinds of back-to-school T-shirts, or just write a check to us, we'll be happy to take that up until August fifteenth. Okay, so that's where we are. There are individuals, our students will perform, we'll have our band and choir and dancing and all that kind of good stuff. And some of our board members have also that they'd like to participate. So we, if you have a gift talent, something that you'd like to display, we'd be happy to showcase you as well. August twenty-second, wait, first, August twenty-first, August twenty-first is the first day of school for all of our staff. It is our kickoff, except for new teachers, but it's our kickoff, uh, to convocation. So we are inviting all of our employees, all twenty-two-hundred-plus, our hundred, so about twenty-three-hundred employees, our student employees, as well as some of our community partners and elected officials and such, to have a big back, uh, a big back-to-school bash for the adults on August twenty-first. And we'll talk about the direction of the school district. We'll have some entertainment. We will feature some of our staff at that event, so you have to come see. They're going to display their talent as well as our students. So we're excited. And, um, we will send a formal, we've actually sent out invitations to everyone across the district and some of our partners. But we also will have a formal letter because people are like, well, what is convocation? So look for a letter from, from the superintendent regarding convocation. And let's see, make sure I covered everything. Oh, and as part of my presentation, oh, the back-to-school bash, the hours are from one to seven. And if you come hungry, um, you know, it's from two to six is when we are going to serve that, right, Ms. Jerritana? From two to six is when we're going to serve the meals. So if you come at six fifteen, there's probably no food left. But we will have food trucks, so separately from the, all the free food that we will disseminate from the district. Yes.
Are there vegan options?
Will there be vegan option? I know there'll be vegetarian option, I don't know about vegan, but we'll have to look into that.
Some, okay.
Okay. Great, you're welcome. And at this time, a part of, as part of my presentation this evening, um, Dr. Mitchell is going to provide a high-level. um, Dr. Mitchell is going to provide a high-level safety presentation as it relates to uh, vape prevention, uh, the vapor prevention system.
Good afternoon again, Board.
Good evening.
This evening, we are asking for the Board's approval on a vape detection proposal system. You know, vaping has become quite popular over these years. Alright, you're gonna have to help me now. Alright, this evening's overview will include the rationale, research, survey results, vetting process, and next steps for vaping, and what is vaping? The act of inhaling and exhaling vapor from a battery-operated device known as an e-cigarette. And it involves a battery, a heating element, a tank or a pot for the vaping liquid. And some of them are as small as a half an inch, or some of them maybe five inches and looks like this pen. Um, the vaping liquid or juice is heated through a vapor and it's, and it is inhaled. Um, a lot of companies are targeting our youth. You see a lot of smoke shops popping up in neighborhoods. And um, it is not helping our schools or our communities. We are obligated to take every step to keep our kids safe, and that includes making sure when they are coming to school, they're not smoking. Making sure when they get to school, they're not inhaling any smoke from anybody smoking or vaping on campus. And having vape detectors may discourage the transition to other gateway drugs, because some of these vapes are saying THC, and THC leads to marijuana, marijuana, these other drugs, and then you have a bigger problem. Vaping in school presents many problems. It's not only illegal, but it is detrimental to the student's health. Learn about this thing called popcorn lungs, and that is the scarring of the tissue in your lungs from continued smoking. And our youth are getting it, because their lungs are still developing. These are the number of vape incidents reported in Allentown School District from September twenty-two through May two thousand twenty-three. And this is the possession of or use or sale of any kind of vaping materials. And yes, we have some elementary schools up there as well. And these are the ones reported, because these are very small devices. The research. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention shows about fourteen percent of high school students and three percent of middle schools reported that they had had vape in the past thirty days. Again, it's a safety risk to students, faculty, and staff and anyone around. We talked about the e-cigarettes, the carcinogens. The causes increase the students' use of vape devices multifaceted, which are um, in the forms of aggressive marketing to our students. Aggressive marketing, aggressive marketing. And again, I am just amazed at the number of vape and smoke shops that are popping up within the last six months. Our policy two twenty-three speaks of vaping and tobacco products. Of course, it prohibits the use and purchase of settled tobacco and vaping products, including jewels and other electronic, and jewels that's a name brand. We surveyed quite a few groups, families, secondary students, administrators, safety officers, and our Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit, because we wanted to find out what our neighbors were doing, because we're all here together. We all, you know, have the same kinds of concerns. That was back up. Alright, that's one. You see the part at the bottom. Uh, families. We asked them, was vaping a concern? Yes. Twenty-one percent agree, and over sixty percent are strongly agree. Everybody knows that this is a concern. The bigger question was, should we invest in vape machines? Strongly agree and agree, seventy-one percent and eighteen. They feel that we should be doing something about it, because they know that it is a concern. Student results, uh, of course, there are some vape machines, of course, all colors, sizes. Confiscated every day. The sevens, the students' results were a little uh, lower than the adults. Uh, but they thought vaping was a concern. And we um, surveyed over a thousand students. Thirty-seven agreed and thirty-six percent strongly agreed. But the majority of them did agree that we should invest in some type of system, because they know it's a problem, and they don't wanna go to school and inhale any kind of vape systems either. But ten percent strongly disagree. Pointed out. These are some of the concerns from the focus students group, and the one that really stood out for me, one student, she said, you know, it's just flavored lung cancer. They know they're gonna get sick. And she said, now tell my friends, you know, don't do it. But there are some comments, you can read them. They said, I see kids smoking. I'm like, well, what do you say? Can you tell them, don't do this? Yeah, I tell them, but they still do it. And they said the vaping machines will be helpful. We also spoke to our administrators, our safety officers, where the principals, assistant principals, elementary, and secondary. And of the administrators and safety officers who were surveyed, seventy-seven percent agree that it's a concern in high school, sixty-six middle school, thirty-two uh, elementary, and four said, you know, it wasn't a concern and we didn't need them. The Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit, we asked our friends and our neighbors. And seven out of fifteen Lehigh Intermediate Districts, they have invested in some kind of vape systems. And we're down there as a know, as you can see, four from the bottom up. We put an R and B, and the selected vendor was AR Technologies, and they were selected because they were a pepper vendor, low-cost, additional products and services, as you know, campaigning to stop kids uh, from even thinking about vaping. Uh, the total cost is two hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. This will be funded, the rest of funding, the rest of three. Equipment will be ordered pending Board approval. Um, this is what the device will look like. It will go up into the ceiling, it looks like a smoke detector. Um, you can't, you will not be able to jump up and snatch it out, because it is gonna be embedded in the ceiling. Um, the wiring installation is expected to begin on the seventh, and the expected date of completion is August twenty-fifth. Next step would be communicating the decision with students, families, and the community. Um, Board action to amend the twenty-three, twenty-four handbook to include it. Communicate to students and families the changes. Um, develop a training schedule for the safety officers and administrators, and collaborate with the school administrators again for device location. And what the machine will do if someone is in the, in a space such as the restroom, uh, vaping, um, it'll be, uh, you can get it on the app, you can get it on a computer. You can look on their camera, and you see who's coming out of the restroom, to see who actually had the uh, device. Right, and that's just the information that goes with it. Questions?
Yes. So, I'm happy to say this, because I've been complaining about this since last year. The question that I have, well, one of the questions that I have for this is, are we gonna post? Because I've asked consistently about signage that shows that we do not tolerate smoking. I've reported to the district as a board member. I've seen students smoking in front of the schools, staff does not say anything to them. Last year prom, I attended with my colleague, and a student dropped a vape pen on the floor. Um, the security officer was like, oh, you know, the kid, he was very nonchalant about it and really didn't care. I reported that as well. So, and also, in addition to that, how are we holding staff accountable to make sure that they reinforcing our policy of no smoking? But that education piece of signage, whether if it spells it out, or there's a big circle with a line going through it, with all the different possibilities of, you know, um, contraband? We need to do something about that. So I'm, I'm happy that we're doing this device, but are we also gonna have that education component posted around the schools that are visible? Because it was stated before that we do have something, but we do, I haven't seen anything, and I've been in the schools as a parent. You know, outside of the school, have not seen it. Um, the start of this, excuse me, I'm just kidding, well, was not on your watch, but we're here now, so we need to address it, like, maybe visit it again. And my last question is, when the device goes off? How was it reset, and who was it that needs to reset?
It automatically resets, um, it's the, like a computer thing.
That's it. Okay, so the other questions, are we gonna have any posters up that shows, you know, some, I mean, around the school, the front of the school, the side of the school, inside the school, outside the bathroom, inside the bathroom, wherever, like?
So, and, and I, I'm just gonna need a little help from our solicitor, who's, I think he's gonna walk out now. In schools that I've worked in, in my other previous districts, we had signage, I have not noticed. And it was a policy, and it was required, that you couldn't smoke on campuses. I just wanna make sure I fully understand, cuz I'm still fairly new to the area. Is that a state policy on, cuz like saying, some districts I've worked in, it was affixed on the building that there's no smoking on school grounds, and that was around. Is that, I wanna make sure, is there a law around that? I know we can make any policy, but I'm just curious. On the building, do we, in the state of Pennsylvania, is it required that school campuses have signage that people cannot smoke on campus?
I know the law prohibits that, but I'm not quite sure that it requires signage.
So I guess to reframe the question, is it acceptable? Is it legal that we have signage that indicates smoking is prohibited?
Yes.
Yes.
And is it, since we're on the topic with safety, right, and reference to the sign?
It's also beyond, uh, there's also uh, a certain distance. I think it's like fifty feet from the edge of a building, there's also uh, smoking is prohibited.
Which is good, because we have parents that sit outside the school and smoke as well, and nobody says anything to them. Not that I don't smoke, and not just because I don't smoke, but what are we teaching our students if we allow people to come around the school and smoke, and if they see any peer smoke, or their siblings smoke? So, we're reinforcing the education that is acceptable to smoke, just as well as all of these vape shops that, you know, pop up everywhere. So, I think the signage is definitely important. But just a quick comment, since we're talking about signage, I think we should also have signage that display weapons as well. So maybe we can have, you know, substances, different contraband, and then also
We, we control the signage on our property.
Okay.
So my favorite question is, do we need a policy for this?
And if so, let's write it right?
I believe that tobacco use, we should have had a policy many years ago on that subject. Uh, but to upgrade our policies to cover other contrabands such as vaping and the like should be addressed. It should be addressed both in policy and in our student uh, handbooks in our variety of buildings for student discipline. Uh, in question, we should have, we should be addressing that.
A policy.
We write a policy that states we have a smoke-free.
Policy two twenty-three addresses vaping and tobacco, and it includes vaping.
Okay.
So.
Our current policy's already addressed that.
So my question is, could we update, I mean, I know we doing it, but just to think about it. Could we update that policy to have a smoke-free campus across the school districts?
I, I believe uh, that, that should be in place already.
But I wanted to indicate signage, because
I don't think, I don't think we need to have a policy to implement signage.
Okay, so what I don't wanna do is, right? I do not want us to have this conversation again, because we've been having this conversation since last year. And the redundancy is really like an issue, because it's happening all the time. So I need to know that we are gonna implement some kind of signage that shows we should not have these items on school grounds.
We, yes, we will explore what it means to put signage on the building, and I, and I say it this way, because we have very old buildings, and I'm not the expert on the old building, that might not be able to put it on the building. But we will have something that people understand, that they shouldn't smoke on our campuses. So it might be something in the ground, I don't know, Mr. Smith, this is your area of expertise, not mine, but we may not be able to put it on the building. But there will be signage outside, yes.
I have a, sorry, one second, just cuz I think somebody stated last time that there was something in writing, which is not, everyone does not read. So again, we need those images that show, you know.
Yes, no, I, I agree with you. I just didn't wanna say we can put something on the building, and he tells me, you can't do that, Dr. Burke, because the building's a hundred and nine years old, and you can't do that. So, but yes, we will have something outside.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I have, I have a question, comment, and Natasha, I think you observed this with me. When you go to Allen High School and you walk around the school, on the ground, it is engraved, say yes to drugs. Smoke here. It's almost like, it, it's not something that we do, it's the kids that do it, or the drug dealers just trying to push it and push it onto our kids. And I remember, this was before I came on the board, we observed this, and I mentioned it to Natasha to bring it back to the board. And I can tell you, it's still there.
And I have the images if you need it.
Yeah, so it's, we definitely need to get rid of, especially if we're gonna put up signage. We have to counteract that actual signage that's actually there on the ground promoting, doing drugs. Like, it's there around the school, and she, she has the photos.
It's carved into the ground. Like, like if the cement was wet, and then, you know, you're just writing the cement.
Yeah.
But it's all around the ninth grade side coming.
Yeah, and it's like, it's carved. I'm sorry, I used the wrong word.
Actually, under the Clean Indoor Air Act, the state not only mandates the placement of signs, and they have specific signs that should be used for no smoking.
Look at that.
Okay, so are we in compliance with that?
So I know in my other places, you had to have it, so I wasn't sure here. Yes, okay.
There's inter, apparently, there's an international no-smoking symbol.
So we will, if we can do it without um, bring it for approval, based on what we can do, we'll implement it. But if we need to come back to you, we should. Okay. Okay, I would just want to show, if it costs a zillion dollars, we'll come back to you. Yeah, that's, that's what I was suggesting. Yes, yes.
Alright, we're all mandated reporters. If you see something, say something, that includes smoking and vaping.
Oh, but you heard me say earlier, I did, I reported it to the district and meetings right here, so I got you now. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Anything else? Do we have any comments on uh, agenda items? We have one comment on, on agenda items. Karen Ocasio.
My name is Karen Ocasio, and I'm here on behalf of the NACP Allentown Ranch. And um, I, we are in part regarding uh, why Cheryl Clark was demoted. Um, I know we can't get into the details of the investigation or what have you, but um, we would like to know what was the outcome of the investigation, and we would like to know eh, why she being demoted. And we want to ensure that this matter has been reviewed properly. Earlier, you guys spoke about attracting and retaining talent in the district. My question in this situation is, did we jump the gun into mode of Ms. Clark? According to sherm.org, more than fifty-two percent of employees who have been demoted will quit. I do not know the details of the investigation, but if whatever was found was not enough to fire her, then I believe this could have been a moment of growth for everyone. This could have been a moment where professional development plan could have been established for Ms. Clark. And if she then, if she did not meet the expectation at that time, then further action could have been taken, if she didn't meet those expectations. In this case, I just feel as though, we just feel as though, maybe we could have um, done development work with her instead of demoting her. Because most likely, she'll quit. Thank you.
May I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
We have a maker, a seconder?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Conover? Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Ms. Brown Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Wilt?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Eight-one vote passes.
Thank you. Uh, we're moving to information updates. Um, Ms. Brown, is there any information from the Human Relations Committee tonight?
Not at this time, I will meet in this next week.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Harris, Ms. Wilt, are there any things, any reports from the library?
No, there isn't at this time.
Is there anything from the Allentown Recreation Commission? Mr. Palmer as well?
We did not meet in June or, uh, June or July.
Um, and I will say there's no report from the foundation tonight. Um, from the Carbonly High Intermediate Unit?
Yes.
Go.
So, um, I went to my first meeting, um, they established a partnership with Eastside Youth Center. For a physical education and recreational activities for the students with special needs, and I thought that was amazing. And also, um. Doctor Elaine Eve retired after serving thirteen years. And they're appointing the music executive director, which is Doctor Gregory S. Coons. So, um. I've observed Doctor Elaine for years and she was amazing in her role, and I can only imagine, uh, who's gonna supersede her. But, um, the hope is that, um, Doctor Gregory will be doing a great job when it comes to our special needs students as well. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. All right, uh, there's no report from the L C T I this evening, there was no meeting this month. Is there a report from the Safety Task Force, Ms. Brown, Ms. Conover, Ms. Harris? We are scheduled to have a meeting Monday.
Monday, coming up.
Yes. From the City Youth Initiative, Mr. Palmer?
There was, uh, no meeting, um, next meeting is next month.
Thank you.
Ms., um, Madam President, can we have a presentation on the Athletic Committee? Is that possible?
Uh, the Board of Directors' report is the next item on the agenda. Because item A is an obituary minute, I'm going to take that one separately and then we'll deal with the rest of the report. Uh, may I have a motion for item A, oh, excuse me, let me read the, uh, the obituary minute first. It is with regret and sorrow. That we record the death of William Winholdt on July ninth, twenty twenty-three. In recognition thereof, the Board of Directors submits the following obituary minute and resolution. Whereas William Winholdt was a faithful and devoted employee of the Allentown School District for more than eleven years. And whereas in his position as maintenance mechanic in the maintenance department. He carried out his duties in a caring and professional manner. And he greeted administrative staff and other staff with a cheerful attitude and willingness to help. And because his passing is marked by a deep sense of loss in the district. The maintenance department, and especially among the maintenance department families. Be it resolved, that the Board of Directors take note of the untimely death of this faithful employee. By causing this obituary minute and resolution to be spread upon the permanent minutes of the board of, of this board. On the twenty-sixth, seventh day of July, twenty twenty-three, with a copy to be sent to his bereaved family. May I have a motion? Some, some move, man, second?
A second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Ms. Brown Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Wilt?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yeah.
Nine-zero vote passes.
Now, may I have a motion for the rest of the Board of Directors' reports, items B, C, and D?
So moved.
So moved, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on motion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Brown?
B, C, D.
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Wilt?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Ms. Brown Noel?
Yes.
Nine-zero vote passes.
Okay. May I have a motion for the approval of the policy report?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Harris makes the motion, is there a second?
A second.
We hear the second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Ms. Brown Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Wilt?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Nine-zero vote passes.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the Approval of the Secretary and Treasurer's Report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a maker and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Conover, go ahead.
So, um. The per capita is collected by Bergama. Is that correct?
Say that again?
Yeah.
Per capita.
Yes.
Yes.
Corrected by Berg, Bergheim, that's a Bergheimer collection.
So when we get these reports and we collecting the two dollars, we're so happy because we getting money, right? Of not only myself. But I'm getting letters. People are calling and getting letters where they collecting money from students. And what happens when you get a bill in the mail, of course, a student don't pay bills, right? Then it becomes, uh, uh, um, final notice, and so my concern is this, as a parent. You know, I, I, I've been, and I, this has been going on for a couple of years now, it's just not happening now. I've been, when they were located at one place, I went there, they supposedly res- resolved it. Then they moved somewhere here in, um. In, in Hamilton, right, and then they only opened certain days, so I felt like they were moving my cheese, you know? And, um.
I had to think about that.
You know, when I sat down and got a little stressed, a little, you know, you choose, you know, I'm gonna get upset about this, but not today, and I don't get that, you know, upset about that. But I thought about it, and I said, think about all the parents. Take every little, well, that's me, actually, every little bit they have to pay their bills, right? And they're paying these bills. And they don't owe it. I feel like they're stealing from them. That's how I feel. So I'm saying to my colleagues. If Bergheim was gonna be the collection people was, they better fix it. But we only wanna pay for what we owe, we don't wanna pay for what we don't owe.
Amen to that.
Agreed.
So my question is, when's the contract up?
So let me just say this right now.
Because I had, because I had that happen too.
I'm still getting those letters.
In school.
So this is what I wanna say, because I'm, this is, I'm always about, if we can fix it, let's fix it. I'm not, I, I understand where you are. But if we get rid of them, then we gotta start over. And I'm okay with starting over.
Me too.
But if they can fix it, they don't, it doesn't have to take a long time to fix it, they need to fix it down, right? I'm willing to continue to work with them, because I got other things to do besides we'll look for another Bergheim. They have to fix that. Because we report, these are not correct numbers, if you taking money from people.
And garnishing their wages.
And garnishing their wages, yeah, the last thing said the green, I said, well, fellow don't even have a job, he gonna get, they just get garnished. But I'm just saying, this is a problem, so if you can fix that.
That was, that was gonna be my question, cause we got five per capita bills in, in the mail in my house this year too. And I just assumed it was when my students started working, that they, um, were automatically. Then on the, on the dole to, to pay the per capita, are you telling me that they're not? Because, I mean, now they're twenty, almost twenty-one and twenty-three, but at the, they started getting them once they. It's appeared to, to start when they started their summer jobs, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine was different, my, my son was still in school.
There were still students, but they were working.
Yeah.
I was on the phone with Bergama. Whoever I spoke to, I wrote their name down, I wrote the date, and I wrote the time. They said disregard it, we'll handle it, don't worry about it. So I just put that away, didn't go back to it. This week. I got the green letter. First thing that you're gonna offer this, but they didn't do anything.
Well, they got our, they got our five, so you should be covered.
Clearly, it's, it's an issue to have to be fixed.
Yes.
Yes, Madam Chair. Okay, I'm sure, go ahead. Um, so, um, Ms. Richards, um, is going to research that, and we'll, we'll work back to the board, what we're finding. And this is all new to me, so, but we will get to the bottom of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conover, we can all.
I will say, uh, if worse does come to worse, I have no problem switching from them, I've had problems with them myself. And I have brought that to the attention before, um, and I was in the office and. The gentleman in the front told me, if you have a problem with that, I don't care, take it up with your school board, because they won't do anything. He looked me in the face and said that, and I was like, I will, I will do that. So again, I have no problem switching.
Don't we use Portnoy for the other part of our collection?
That's the language. So Portnoy does our delinquent collections.
Well, they're quite good.
They're good.
They're quite good, we don't have any, I never see any problems with that. Nevertheless, they do work with our, they do, um, constantly, constantly. Support our school district financially. With, 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 with things for our students. Just saying.
I don't wanna worry about, I don't wanna ask, you know, do approval and all that, I don't wanna do that for them, unless they don't fix it.
They haven't fixed it yet.
How about you?
Okay.
Don't feel like voting on it.
I think we got a message here. It, it, one I thoroughly agree with, by the way.
Thank you.
Please call the roll for the Secretaries and Treasurers' report.
Ms. Brown Noel?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Wilt?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
No.
Ms. Harris?
No.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Six, seven-two vote passes.
May I have a motion for the approval of the Superintendent's Report?
So moved.
We have a maker, is there a seconder?
Second.
We have a seconder, eh, is there any discussion on the Superintendent's Report? In, in that case, call the roll, please.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Wilt?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Ms. Brown Noel?
Yes.
Nine-zero vote passes.
Before I ask you for a motion for the Personnel Report, I need to comment on two changes over what was originally posted. Change number one, Doctor Michael Roth has just notified the district. That he wants to withdraw his resignation as C A O of the district. Item two, Doctor Latrice Muman has informed the Superintendent. That she has received an opportunity in her district, and she has withdrawn her candidacy for us. Those are the two changes, may I have a motion for approval of the Personnel Report?
I wanna make the motion to pull item number. Under recommendation, there's a lot of paper here. Hey, I believe. Just bear with me, cause I had it. Okay, it's item number X, it wasn't here. A, X, A, under recommendations. The motion to, no, it's big. Motion to approve the, the motion resolution of employee number three-nine-three-eight-five. To an Assistant Principal Position effective July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, at the salary of one oh five a year.
Your motion is to handle that item separately?
No, it's to pull it.
Pull it? And is there a second to that motion?
Okay, so it's the motion, is it a motion to table would be the appropriate?
That, that might work faster?
Yeah.
That better?
A motion to table it? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
I seconded already.
Okay, so are you moving to table?
Yes.
Lisa, are you moving to table?
I would really like to remove it, let me tell, um, can you explain to me what's the difference between tabling?
Table means to take it off the agenda.
I wanna take it off the agenda, that's what I wanna do.
Yeah, so that's the impact of a table.
Yes.
To take it off the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, that's what I wanna do, I wanna take it off.
And then you're seconding that?
Yes.
All right, there, all right, there is no discussion on a motion to table?
That's correct.
Eh, so please call the roll.
A yes vote would be to table it, a no vote will be to not table it.
Correct.
Mr. Palmer?
So is there a time to put it back on, or am I not even allowed to ask that question?
That, that, there's no obligation to put it back on. It means that, uh. The demotion would not occur and that the, if, if you wanna have an executive session to discuss the impact of the.
I would need to know what the impact would be if I'm gonna. Like, I, I don't know when this would come back, I don't know what the impact would be, I don't, it'd be kind of.
Then you should vote, uh, you, then you should vote no on the motion to table.
Uh, no.
Okay.
Mr. Parliamentarian?
Yes.
Are you suggesting recessing for an executive?
Well, if, if there is a desire to have an executive session to discuss that.
I would like that.
We do have a motion to table on the floor.
We can go into an executive session to discuss that.
In the middle of the process.
Right.
Okay.
Can I remove, send that, and then, I.
We did have discussion.
Okay, so, no.
We did, in executive session.
Guys don't wanna do that, then no.
Let's vote. Just, I, yes. Call the roll, please, on the, this is on the motion to table.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Dr. Santana?
No.
Ms. Wilt?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
No.
Ms. Matheson?
No.
Ms. Brown Noel?
No.
Ms. Ortiz?
No.
Two-seven vote fails.
Then that means that the personnel agenda remains as you see it, except for the changes I announced in the beginning.
That is correct.
Right, uh, now, may I have a maker for the Personnel Agenda?
So I'll make the motion.
I'm over, uh, Ms. Ms. Harris, Ms. Wilt, are you seconding it? Is there any discussion on the Personnel Agenda?
Yes. There's, um, somebody on the Personnel Agenda that I have to, um, speak on, um, Aub- Aubrey Oswald. I noticed that she's leaving Sheridan, um, I just want to publicly thank her.
And you, you speak up just a little bit?
Um, there's a, um. A staff member on the agenda that's leaving Sheridan, um, Aubrey Oswald, I just wanted to publicly thank her. I just wanted to publicly thank her for everything that she did. She worked with Ms. Kiss, she was um, the learning support teacher for Gianna, and she's a wonderful woman, and it's a very big loss to the Allentown School District, so um, I just wanted to thank her um, publicly for everything that she did for Gianna in uh, fourth and fifth grade.
Right, is there any other discussion?
Yes, right, this is the entire personnel report.
Yes, please.
Wait a minute, quick question. Why aren't we supposed to vote first and then discussion?
No, discussion comes before the vote.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so, um, I just want to say that when I often speak about making decisions, right? I speak about making an informed decision based off of the facts that I have that is presented before me. And in addition to that, based off of the research that I have done pertaining to the situation. What bothers me this evening is that I have to vote a certain way for the entire personnel report when I only have discrepancies against certain, when I have, when I'm against certain things within the personnel report. As a voting member of this board, it is my right to have the ability to vote the way I see fit to vote. Despite if individuals feel as if my vote can cause someone embarrassment, right? So publicly, I am stating it is never my desire or goal or intentions to ever embarrass humiliate um, anyone. My intentions are pure and based off of, again, the information that I have. I am a woman of character and integrity, and I stand on it. So if I feel based off of the information that I have, that I need to vote a certain way, that is my right. So with that being said, um, I feel like my right was taken for me to vote for what I want to vote for for the sake of saving someone else, um, someone else's opinion or others' opinion of causing someone an embarrassment. So what I want to say is, I want this to be a teachable moment for all of us. And to make sure that when we are going through processes that we are thoroughly going through, we are thoroughly doing our research before it comes to us as board members, right? Because I'm only obligated to vote for what is before me. I'm not obligated to vote based off of my colleagues' thoughts and opinions. I'm only obligated to vote based off of what I believe in with the facts that are presented to me. So with that being said, as a body, a governor in body, I feel like we have to do better because there's always room to grow, right? So I feel like we have to do better with respecting each other's ability and opinion to vote how they see fit. I feel like I was not given that right tonight, so therefore I feel compelled to vote the way that I need to tonight. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
So I just want to say in regards to that, you can always vote however you would like to, don't let anyone or anything stop you from voting any way you'd want to. You can always remove items, you can do anything because you have that right, you've earned that right to do these things. So do not feel that you have to do anything anyway. You are your own person and you have earned the right, and you have earned the respect to be able to do whatever you feel right, whatever you feel necessary. So by all means, whatever you would like to do, you can.
So since you say that, right? Do you feel that that option was given to me because I asked to have something pulled to vote separately and I was not given that right? And what that says to me is, I know that I am respected by many because I'm open, I'm honest, right? However, I don't feel that I had an equal decision, equal ability to make a decision. My request was to vote for that separately, and that option was not given. Therefore, that is the reason that I'm giving this statement because of that. I appreciate your empowerment. I appreciate your encouragement, but honestly, that's not partially true.
Natasha, may I say that as an elected official, as an elected official from Allentown, that you got elected by the city of Allentown? And this is how you're treated? This is none, this is not unusual. This is the way I've, it's been like that for me since two thousand seventeen.
Don't, don't mistake him what I'm saying, right? What I'm saying is
I know what you're saying.
I I just want to say it for everybody. If I make a request, and I'm not boasting, that's not what I'm saying. But if I make a request, which is my right, and that right is not given to me because I am an elected official, elected by the residents of Allentown, which I am obligated to make sure that I am doing my due diligence, to make sure that I'm doing the right thing, then I would have conversations like this. It's never my intentions to do this because I do not like distractions. I do not like for people to cause division. If anybody could remember, one of the main things that I talked about is the board being divided, and it's never my intentions to do that. But we must respect each other's right ability to be able to vote in the way that they want to, whether if you feel that the person is going to go in favor of what you desire, majority rules no matter what. So therefore, there was no reason to not pull certain items out of the personnel report. Thank you.
So I'd also just like
Call the roll, please.
So one more, one more. I would also just like to say, my only thing was to not allow a certain thing to happen before you did that. So I never said you couldn't. I just said before you did that to stop one thing from happening.
Oh, I'm not going to allow it, that's why I'm speaking. And see, once again, this is being rude.
I have a question.
Your partner wasn't finished, but go ahead.
I have a question. So if you, if you requested to pull something from the, from the report and vote on it separately, the decision to do that, would that be a collective decision, meaning like five people would have to vote on that, or the fact that you requested it had to happen?
No, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Theoretically, a majority vote of the board could uh, pull out a particular item from the agenda, but that would be done typically earlier in the meeting.
Which we did. Which we did, we did do that. And the vote was to not make it separate.
She's mentioning the, the employee demotion.
That was on record. It is not about the demotion, to clarify, because he said it's about the demotion. It's not about the demotion.
Let's try again.
Ms. Will? Yes. Ms. Brown? Ms. Conover? Ms. Harris? Ms. Matheson? Ms. Brown Noel? Ms. Ortiz? Mr. Palmer? Dr. Santana? Seven, two vote passes.
May I have a motion for the approval of the finance report?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Santana? Ms. Will? Ms. Brown? Ms. Conover? Ms. Harris? Ms. Matheson? Ms. Brown Noel? Ms. Ortiz? Mr. Palmer? Eight, one vote passes.
Do we have any non-agenda comment cards?
There are no comments on non-agenda items.
Is there any old business to come?
Yes, um, it has been brought to my attention by Marcy Lesko that um, she did not lie, that the person is from Venezuela. However, it was not put in his, his bio, so his name looks American. So you know, I, I could, I'm wrong on that. She did not lie. So we do have Hispanic uh, representation on the board. However, I'm still stuck on the fact that there's no Hispanic representation for our, for the programs that they are doing. Um, also with old, um, old business, there's something we still need to look at executive education. We just got, they just got two of our supreme athletes, two of them from Deer football. This is something we discussed at the athletic committee. They say they have a thousand people, like a thousand something on the waiting list, but yet they what is this, Lucky Charms? Magically delicious, they, these people get, get on there? Unbelievable, huh? They, the two athletes, so they're poaching our athletes. I, uh, once again, we need to bring them to, what is it, P I double A? Who do we need to bring them to? Yes, we need to do that again. Please do, because they're taking our students, but they're saying one thing and doing another. So that's something we need to look into. They just took two of them. Just, they just took two. And that's, they've been doing it all along, they're taking our baseball kids. They're taking, they're taking our athletes, and they're not on the waiting list. It's a lottery, but like I said, Lucky Charms.
Still old business? Is it old business or new business?
It's going to be old business. And I don't, I'm not taking away, but you know, this is the end of our meeting, but I I could not close out this meeting without acknowledging Mr. John Hughes. And I know charging to our heads, not our hearts, you know, he said a lot of good things about our speech when he was here. I'm sure he would want to hear us talk about that instead of him. But I know he's touched many lives, um, many of us are not able to go through the services, um, but he is not just there for Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Allentown.
When people
In memory.
Called us, said all the bad things about A S D. I never saw him take a thing, I just saw him show us through his photos who our students are and who they was. And this is a huge loss for Allentown. My prayer goes out, because I'm a praying woman, to his family, for their strength, for all of us, all those lives that he's touched here in Allentown. I pray for, for us, because I got, I'm included in that. He was a, a phenomenal man. And you know how, um, they had that picture where the kids say, God don't make no doubt, you know what I mean? Every time I saw a picture of a student that he, I always thought, my head, God don't make no doubt. So I just pray that he rests in perfect peace. And um, I apologize, but not apologize to the board for taking your time, but I couldn't close this meeting now without acknowledging you. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Conover, because I was going to do that as well. I, I did have the opportunity to go to his memorial and I was, um, because I served on the foundation board with him for years and he was the dear of alumni person and I'll say, you know, there were many times when we had long meetings and, and then when it got time to talk about um, what was going on in the schools, you almost were like because he always had so much to say, um, because he was so proud of everything that was A S D and in particular Deer F. And I, I wanted, I was going to do what you just did, but I want to say I was blown away by the number of students that were at um, his, his um, viewing. It was just so, um, to his family, um, he, he, he really, he was a gift to A S D and his photos are a legacy.
Uh, I believe it's appropriate for us to have a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. Is there any new business?
Um, we had a, uh, Monday, we had a meeting for the athletic committee. Um, I have to give out a shout out to Dr. Mitchell, she did a great job with this. This was the best, I mean, the best athletic committee meeting I've been to since I've been doing this since two thousand eighteen. She had the school principals there, and then we got insight from the school principals, she had all the A Ds there. And from Allen and Deer F. Deer F completely put in our face what they're facing. It's not fair that and once again, it's not fair that they're, they don't have what the other school districts have. They don't have what Allen has. We're using the city park and it's not right. We can't, we don't have a fence around it, it, it's, it, it dips, it holes, it's awful. And it's not fair to our children to have to sit on a wooden bench, bees above them, bees below them, and bees on the side of them that are eating the bees. They're big bee, I saw that for myself, there's some big bees and they were eating a bee. Yes, I was, uh, who wants to go out there with that? And so, we know, we're paying against other school districts, that is beautiful. You know, and we have that, you will have our Allen, because that's something that we did with, you know, R B I. However, you know, I'm watching this, I'm watching, you know, the A D almost cry. That hurts because that means our students are not getting, and then how encouraging is that for our students? How encouraging is that? Because athlete, athletics, that's all we had in my family, athletics and academics. That's the only way you's going to get to school, going to go to college, because my daddy had thirteen, how in the world can he pay for that? Couldn't. So with our children, how do we, how do we get them out of, I, uh, once again, by any means necessary to get them to a point of either college or career? But in the meantime, sports is teaching them discipline. They have to, they have to stay, they have to have a certain academic score to stay on the team. So if that encourages them to do so, let's do so. Also, I have to give it to Dr. Bur, I mean, Dr. Dr. Mitchell. Um, she was bringing forth a lot, they had, we had a lot of questions along with um, um, Tom Smith. She was able to answer them. I was like, where's this coming from? Why didn't you tell us about this early? You should have showed your brilliance, and I thank you very much, Dr. Mitchell. Also, the, uh, the, the part that she started out the meeting, and this was the really great, is norms. She started out with that as what norms do we want to have? And that gave us an insight, a big insight to what all the people, it was like fourteen people there, fourteen, fifteen people there, of what we should do as our norms for our athletes and our stadium. So thank you again, uh, and thank you, um, Jeff, for Fox Rothschild, for um, providing the lunch for us. And that's it.
You have some closing comments to make.
Yeah, I'd just like to address, because I would remiss not to address this publicly, uh, Ms. Phoebe's comments. And I, we, we thank you for acknowledging the hard work of the committee. However, the district does not own the park. I agree, there are inequitable conditions across the district as it relates to athletics. However, we do not own the park. Uh, the city owns the park. And so we, even if we had fifteen kazillion dollars, we still couldn't do anything about that facility because we don't own the park. And so, and that park was left in trust to the city. And some of the comments that you made about fences and all that, even like saying we owned it, we couldn't put a fence up around it. So I want to put that on record, it's not that the district is not moving forward and trying to ensure that we have adequate facilities for our students, but we do not own Andre P P Park. We do have some possible friends and partners in the city who want to support us with the park, but again, I have to say this, we do not own the park.
Shame on you, Allentown, city of Allentown, for having us, having our students do play there. do uh, play there when the other school districts look so much better. How dare you, city of Allentown?